Good evening, Chatham. This is a joint meeting of the Chatham Select Board and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees of June 11, 2024. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the chair. I don't see any such notifications, so we'll go to the standard line here. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31, 2025. This joint meeting of the Chatham Select Board and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting, while in progress, may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. Before we even take a roll call here to establish quorums, I just want to let the town know, many of you do know, that we lost two beloved members of our community in the last few days, indeed, one this morning. The first was Mark Zebraat, whom I'm sure many of you know. He was a member of the Water and Sewer Advisory Board, the Planning Board. He was an award-winning architect for many years. He was a great personal friend of mine and somebody with whom I worked very closely, as I'm sure many of the people in this room did, as well as the people around this table. We will miss him greatly, and I am so sorry. Condolences to his family and all of his very close friends here in Chatham. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to note also the passing of Don Aikman this morning. He died peacefully at home with his family. This was a double dose of sadness for them because they had just lost a son within the last week or so. Don was a longtime member of the Chatham Historical Commission, past chair. He was the commission's representative to the Community Preservation Committee. He served on the Railroad Museum Committee for a long time, including a time as its director, and he served on the Chatham 300th Anniversary Committee. He was very much an integral part of the town of Chatham and Chatham community. He will be greatly missed by all who knew him, and our condolences go out to his wife, Debbie, and his entire family. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now take a roll call of the Select Board. Select Board Member Castro.
Present.
Select Board Member Metters.
Present.
Select Board Member Davis.
Present.
And Select Board Member Shell is present. We have a couple of items of regular business for the Select Board, and then we'll take the roll call of the, and convene the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees. The first, the agenda for the evening is, we have one set of minutes to approve of the Select Board. We have public announcements and agenda requests. We have an update from the Cape and Islands District Attorney, Rob Gallis, who's in the House and will be speaking to all of us. We'll have an opportunity for public comment on the business agenda, although that's academic because the public will be invited to comment alongside of the one item of business this evening, which is presentations of the housing development proposals for Main Street and for Meeting House Road. And with that, I will invite a motion on the minutes of May 7, 2024 of the Select Board.
Move to approve the minutes of May 7, 2024.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one edit on page four, third paragraph from the bottom, and it says Bruce Craven, his name is Chris Craven. Kathy, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, approval, vote. Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Metters.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. The minutes are approved. Next is public announcements and agenda requests. Do we have any from the board?
Ms. Chair.
Ms. Davis?
So I just want to give a big shout out to last Saturday's Airport Days. I want to thank the volunteers, the Airport Commission, and Tim and Christine Howard, and the slew of volunteers for their fantastic idea of combining cars, trains, and automobiles into a well-organized and family-friendly event. One of my favorite moments was seeing this little boy wearing a T-shirt that read, "I love big trucks, and I cannot lie." The event was well-attended and brought together various sectors of our community, including car enthusiasts, airplane enthusiasts, train and historic enthusiasts, foodies, and music lovers. This event, to me, rivaled the Fourth of July. It was well-attended. I would have to say thousands of people were there. Everyone was upbeat, the weather was outstanding, and it truly felt like a cherished community tradition has started. So I want to say congratulations to all that were involved.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a clarification on the future Select Board agenda items. I had a request, this is for the 25th, and this is the report back of the feasibility study on the Center for Active Living at 193 Stony Hill Road. I appreciate that it's on there. I just was hoping it could be listed separately and captioned separately as a forum. That was what I had initially requested. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others from the board? As long as you're up here, the members of the Affordable Housing Trust, do you have any announcements or... Sorry? Yeah, I was going to go to the public. Oh, Mr. Messina, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Frank Messina, and I'm the chairman of the Historical Commission, and the passing of Don, obviously hitting very close to us. Don was my mentor for 20-some years, and I always looked to him as the gray beard, we used to call him, the guy knew everything. But that's really not why I rose, to speak. I'm speaking about something called Historic Chatham, and interesting, Don was one of the founders of Historic Chatham. During the tercentennial in 2012, there was a lot of history being discussed, and plaques were put all over the town. And then we realized, those of us on the Historical Commission, and the members of the Historical Society, and the other historic venues in town, that, you know, why stop? Let's continue. And a group was formed called Historic Chatham. And basically, it's a group that consists of all of the major venues, the Calv Nickerson House, the Godfrey Windmill, the Marconi RCA, the National Wildlife Refuge, and the Montemoy Lighthouse, the Railroad Museum, which I heard you interviewing, a future member, and the Mayo House. So it's quite a group, and our philosophy is more cooperate and graduate, you know, that if we all work together and attempt to help each other, we can be more successful. Anyway, you'll see some banners around town and some posters, and this weekend is what we call History Weekend. So from June 14 through the 16th, there's a number of significant events in town at all of the venues. It's like Statue of Liberty, everybody lives in New York but rarely go to the Statue of Liberty, and I wonder how many people have been to the various museums. So some of the museums are half-price, some of them are free, like the Railroad Museum, like the Godfrey Windmill, and we're all doing things. On Thursday, at the Eldridge Public Library, Dan Zoto, who's an archaeologist from the Historical Commission, is giving a talk on Chatham's historic cemeteries, which is very interesting, finding out where our forefathers buried right next door. The Calv Nickerson Homestead is going to have a special event. The Godfrey Windmill, with weather permitting, we're going to be grinding corn. And one significant event is the Marconi is having its annual meeting on Saturday morning, I think, at 9:30, and a gentleman by name of Bill Ferris. Some of you may know Bill. Bill was the last manager of the Marconi, well, it was actually the RCA stationed for about 20 years before it closed, and he's going to give an interesting talk at the Orpheum Theater. So anyway, I just ask you, if you're interested, it's called Historic Chatham. You don't have to memorize the website, just go to good old Google and say Historic Chatham, and our website will come up, and you'll get a chance to view some historic venues in town and save a couple of dollars. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, Frank. Any other Republican? I'm sorry, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Future of the agenda request.
Please.
For the Community Housing Partnership to present their charge, changes to their charge.
Start over.
For the Community Housing Partnership to present changes to the charge, our charge.
Okay. We'll note that down, thank you. Any others in the room here, among the public here in the room? Are there any online?
No, no one online, which is to speak.
Okay. So next, we will go to our update from the, our district attorney, Mr. Rob Gallis.
Permission to approach to enter the new report?
Granted.
Thank you. I apologize if I didn't bring enough copies, I didn't realize it was a job session. Take a shortcut.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to come before you to give you a little bit of a brief update. I can see you have quite a full agenda, so I'll keep my remarks brief. Again, for the record, my name is Rob Gallis. I am the district attorney for the Cape and the Islands. Similar to last year, and I welcomed the opportunity last year to come before you with a little bit of an update, I just wanted to give you a little bit of update, what we've done since I last appeared before the board. First off, and this just happened the past week or two, we launched a website for the office, an independent website, if you will. The website is capenislandsda.gov. It's been described as a forward-facing website. The old website used to be a mass.gov website that wasn't really controlled by our office, so to speak. And just something of note, and it's kind of interesting, all the other 10 DA's offices have their own independent website, but they were .com or .org. We were the first DA's office in the entire Commonwealth to have a .gov independent website, so off that for whatever it's worth. It's interactive, you can sign up for certain notifications, we can email you, we can text you, whatever your preference is. So we're pretty excited about it. I explored for about 40 minutes when it was first launched, and I didn't get through the entirety of the website, so I invite everyone to take a look at it, and if you'd like to sign up for updates of what's going on in your community or across the Cape and the Islands, you can certainly do that. Couple different, I just want to talk basically about three different topics for the evening, and I'll keep it under 10 minutes, but I want to start off with human trafficking. This is a matter that wasn't really on the radar screen at all as I was preparing or running for this, for this job. Candidly, it popped up for the first time in early January, shortly after I was sworn in of 2023. I was invited to a talk at a coffee shop in Hyannis, presentation by a survivor of human trafficking, her name is Jasmine Grace. And when I walked in that cold Tuesday night in January, it's about 25 people in the room, and there was only one other gentleman, big strong man in a blue uniform, wound up being the chief of police for your neighbor, Orleans Scott McDonald. So I listened to this really compelling presentation by Jasmine Grace, again, a survivor, and a day or two later, I went down to Orleans PD to meet with Chief McDonald, and then essentially just asked him, "What were you doing there?" And he explained to me that he had a goal, that he wanted to launch a human trafficking task force within law enforcement circles, and wanted every single police department on the Cape to dedicate at least one officer or detective to that task force. I was inspired. I went back to my office, met with some staffers, and I said, "What can we do?" And we launched our own human trafficking task force, made up of civilians, and folks like Cape Cod Path, or People Against Trafficking Humans, Health Imperatives, Cape Cod Hospital, Children's Cove, and others, Treasured Life, all came together, and we had a goal to try to promote awareness to the issue of human trafficking. And they started meeting quarterly. As all of you know, we're a prosecuting office. We did not have a prosecuting unit focused on human trafficking at the time, so I approached our Cape delegation and explained that I wanted to launch one. And I'm very grateful that it was well-received, we got the additional funding, and that allowed me to approach a woman named Vanessa Madge, who was an assistant attorney general at the time up in Boston, and candidly, essentially beg her to come down here to the Cape to help launch our prosecuting unit, the human trafficking. So she comes down last summer, and one of her first order of businesses was to work with the Director of Community Programs, many people in this room know her, Danielle Whitney. And they applied for a particular grant. This is a grant that was administered by the Massachusetts District Attorneys Association. The pot was $1 million, had been out there for several years, decade or more. And there are 11 DA's offices that would compete, the ceiling for the grant was $100,000. This office had never applied before. So they put their application together, as they're doing so, they learn the pots cut from $1 million to $450,000. So we submit our application, and we learned about two weeks later that we received $97,051. So that's good stuff. What did we do with the money? We gave $50,000 to an outfit called My Life, My Choice. They work with adolescent and teenage survivors of human trafficking. We gave $10,000 to the Impotence House in Hyannis, they work with adult survivors of human trafficking, and we use the balance for training for both our law enforcement partners as well as prosecution staff. And we continued on. Myself and a few others in the office began going on a tour across the Cape and the Islands, meeting with various stakeholders to help us, again, promote the awareness of human trafficking across the Cape. And we met with folks like the YMCA, Community College, Cape Cod Healthcare, Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority, Chamber of Commerce, and everyone was receiving it very well, and they agreed to do such things as put pieces of information on websites and literature that they were handing out. We created a hotline, and then we created a QR code, and we just got 1,000 magnets recently that hopefully you're going to start seeing in the back of bathroom stalls in your favorite restaurant, it'll be back at taxi cabs, CCRTA buses, and alike. So we continue this push regarding our human trafficking efforts, and candidly, I'm quite proud of the efforts that our staffers have made so far. Turning to human rights, we launched a human rights unit within the office, it's head by Courtney Scalisi. Courtney comes to us with a really unique background. She was a prosecutor in New York City, Guam, and Anarundel County, just outside of Baltimore and Maryland. Why that particular resume? Her husband's in the Coast Guard, so they did some moving around. She's originally from Massachusetts, her husband's about a year or so away from retirement, and she wanted to come back to Massachusetts, so she interviewed various DA's offices, and we were fortunate enough to land her. She is the head of our Human Rights Division. As many of you know, we've had a lot of high-profile hate incidents in my short tenure as DA. I've been in office now about 17 months. One of the earlier ones was an incident occurred on Main Street in Hyannis that was captured on video, and the video went, quote-unquote, viral. Most, if not all, of you in this room are familiar with a matter that occurred here in this town at Goose Pond. We've had incidents on Martha's Vineyard where a white supremacy group tagged signs on telephone poles outside of black-owned businesses. We've had writings on the wall of the Mashmiwampanoog language reclamation office. Just last week, we had an incident in Sandwich involving a particular baseball team. So we've had several high-profile matters, but unfortunately, we've had a lot more low-profile matters. Courtney's handling these investigations, and as they conclude, I will report back how they wound up. Last topic I want to talk about is community engagement. When I was running for this position, I would suggest that there were two issues that resonated wherever I went. First was mental health. You might remember, I spoke about, last time when I was here last year, that we really needed a mental health court. A mental health court is where professionals in the field come right into the courtroom, work with a struggling defendant to identify what's the core issue. Once you make that identification, then of course, you can treat the core issue, reducing recidivism, making us all safer. And I want to recognize Judge John Julian, the presiding justice in the Barnstable District Court. We launched a mental health court, I believe it was last September, so it was after I was last here, and Judge Teresa Wright is the presiding justice in that court. And we were asked to appoint a prosecutor for that particular session. When I asked the staff, a woman named Shawna Souve raised her hand very quickly. Shawna is the son of a Barnstable police officer, dad's been with the Barnstable PD for quite a long time, and she has her bachelor's degree in psychology. So that docket opened up last fall. It's growing organically, as you might imagine, it's pretty healthy at this particular point, and even though it's in Barnstable and here in Chatham, as many of you may know, cases that arise here go to the Orleans District Court, we can transfer those types of cases to Barnstable so folks from this community can receive those services if need be. So the other issue regarding community engagement, we heard a lot about how folks didn't really know what the district attorney's office does, certainly didn't know many people in the office, so I talked about creating a community engagement officer. We've done that. Her name is Kelly Quealy. Kelly is a lifelong Barnstable resident and had worked in the office for about 12 years on the admin side before we appointed her to this position. And the first task that she is charged with is creating a community coalition that we call the DA and Us. They're actually meeting this evening, again, in your neighbor town of Orleans. Anywhere from a half dozen to a dozen folks on these community coalitions, depending on the size of the town, and we're looking for all walks of life, folks that have never engaged in civil civic work in their life, some local elected officials, some law enforcement officials, and essentially, it's just an opportunity for us to try to keep in the knowers what's going on. One person on our staff, keenly noted, when you look at Cape Cod from the satellite, you see 1 Cape Cod, but as we all know, down here, from living here, there's at least 15 different Cape Cod's with 15 different towns, if not more so, because many of the towns are broken up into villages, and often people identify themselves by what village they live in. Again, the short time in office, I've already seen things like, over here, I might have an uptick in fraud cases with the elderly, over here, I might have an uptick in hate incidents in the schools, and over here, the opioid crisis might be raging more than other communities. So this is just a way for me to keep a finger on the pulse of what's going on. I'm done with the subjects, but for one, and I'm going to have an ask, but it's not going to cost you any money. So you may remember last year when I spoke, we also learned early in the administration that our office budget was a lot less than a comparable-sized DA's office. I spoke about Northampton, the Northwest District. The Northwest District is made up of Franklin County and Hampshire County, the biggest town is Northampton. And they have 260,000 residents year-round, that's almost us to a T, we hover between 260 and 265, between Barnstable Dukes and Nantucket. When I first started here, my budget was $5.5 million, theirs was $8.5 million. The way things progressed through last year, it's actually grown to a $3.2 million deficit, and going into FY '25, it looks at the moment, that it's going to be a $3.4 million deficit between us and them. Our team members are getting together, we're putting together an agenda to go on, again, a tour throughout the Cape and Islands. And we're going to come back with specifics, with your permission, to explain, this is what we're looking to do, should we be able to secure the additional funding, and this is what it will cost. We hope to lay out our proposal to you and to try to convince you to back our efforts, so we can provide the same level of services as the Northwest District. So again, I very much appreciate your time, and with your permission, I'll come back in the fall.
Thank you. Do you have time for a question?
Of course I do.
From the board, the boards?
I just have a, I don't have a question, but I just want to say that, you know, listening to what you've put together for programs in the office, you're putting community and community first, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
It's, it has value in how people end up at the end of the day if there's a problem, and I just think it's the way to go.
I appreciate you saying that, thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Thanks very much, we really appreciate you coming over. Let me next convene the meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust Board by calling the roll here. Trustee McClellan?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Trustee Schneberger?
Here.
Trustee Bean?
Here.
And Trustee Avery?
Here.
The basic way that we thought we would proceed this evening is that we would give the public an opportunity to hear something like what these two boards heard from the three proponents who submitted five proposals for the two properties in question, Main Street and Meeting House Road, and then that would be followed by an opportunity for the public to comment, ask questions, and so forth, as well as for the board, the boards to make their comments. We had, as you perhaps know, one proposal only for Main Street from Housing Assistance Corporation, and then we had proposals from CDP and POA jointly for both properties, Main Street and Meeting House Road, and then finally, a proposal for each of those two from Penrose. The CDP proposal was one which offered us the opportunity to pick one or the other if we so chose, with someone else doing the other property. Penrose offered to do Main Street alone, but not Meeting House Road. And finally, we had a meeting last Wednesday at which all 10 members of the Evaluation Committee, which basically was the Select Board and the Affordable Housing Trust Board membership, submitted their evaluations of the various proposals and had a very thorough discussion, I think it was about two hours, at the end of which there were recommendations from the Evaluation Committee, which selected Penrose for both of those properties. There was significant interest on the part of our Evaluation Committee in all three proposals, and based upon the number of selections on the part of individual evaluators, which ranked a proposer number one, we thought it would be very useful for the public in this meeting to hear directly from those people with respect to their proposals, and accordingly, we invited them to come and make those presentations. And that is the first order of business here in this evening's meetings. I'll invite our Housing and Sustainability Director up here to introduce them. Gloria and I did not completely get our ducks lined up as to the order, but I think we sort of agreed that maybe we would start with CDP, POA, at Meeting House, and then we would follow that with- we would follow that with HAC at Main Street, and then we would allow Penrose to make its presentations with respect to both, with respect to both properties. And I also understand that Mr. Levitt has a kind of a presentation that he would like to make. So as part of the public comment, following the presentations from the proponents, if you would like to follow that immediately, Mr. Levitt, you're welcome to do that, or if you want to wait and do it at a time that you select during the course of the meeting, that's, that's fine too. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Gloria. Sure, please.
Just one slight correction. Last week, all 10 members submitted their paperwork on how they reviewed the properties, but only seven members were present for the vote.
Yeah, no, that's correct. That is correct.
Thank you. That was a point that I was going to make, so I appreciate that, Carolyn. So I don't have anything further to add beyond what Chair Shell had to say. So I would like to introduce the POA team, POA CDP, who is going to do a presentation on the Meeting House Road property. They were ranked highest by two members of the Evaluation Committee for their Meeting House Road proposal.
Yeah, it's all preloaded on the laptop right there.
Good evening. I'm Jay Coburn, the CEO of the Community Development Partnership, the Lower Cape Region's nonprofit community development corporation. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to share with you who we are, what we are proposing to build at the Meeting House Road site, and the thinking behind our proposal. As many of you know, the Community Development Partnership has been working on the lower and outer Cape for three decades. And we are deeply committed to helping Lower Cape residents live, work, and thrive here on the Lower Cape and by providing and developing and advocating for affordable housing, as well as nurturing the launch and growth of small businesses. We have partnered with POA Preservation of Affordable Housing because they are one of the most successful developers of affordable and attainable housing on Cape Cod. POA has built six communities totaling more than 200 affordable and attainable apartments, with another three developments totaling 127 apartments under construction, one of which is being done in partnership with the CDP in Wellfleet. POA employs 30 full-time Cape-based property management and resident services staff across the 10 communities here on the Cape. And finally, POA has the same financial strength and staff capacity of its for-profit peers with 14 Boston-based project managers, a robust balance sheet with nearly $2 billion in assets, and an institutional credit rating of A+ from Standard and Poor's. Some people may think that nonprofit developers are less capable or not as financially robust as their for-profit peers. With our team, this is clearly not the case. We are a team that unites deep commitment and accountability to the communities that we serve with significant financial strength and development expertise. Rather than being a, rather, being a nonprofit is important in that it means that building and delivering the right housing for the community will always take precedence over the need to generate profits. Let me tell you a little bit about the development principles that we used in designing our proposal. So our extensive experience developing housing on the Cape informs our development principles for Meeting House Road. First, in a place like Chatham that is experiencing the threat of climate change firsthand, we wanted to propose a community that is highly energy efficient and sustainable and that we were confident that we could build. We are not overpromising a development vision that may be too expensive or that cannot be highly energy efficient. Second, we are realistic about costs and funding sources, especially at the state level. We are experts at securing funding and we have a good idea about what will work and what won't. And third, we are committed to evolving our design in response to feedback. To be candid, we've heard some people have found our building designs too contemporary or that some buildings are too large. We chose these designs for a reason, but we understand how emotional and important these decisions are, and we welcome this feedback. And we are committed to working with the town and the community to change the design to what is right for Chatham. So finally, my colleague Gail Sullivan from Studio G Architects is now going to talk a bit about the motivations for our design. Gail?
Thanks, Jay. Besides being an architect, I want to say I'm a part-time Wellfleet resident, so I have a personal stake in what happens in the Lower Cape. So, oops, not a touchscreen. In addition to the development principles, we were working with a number of important design principles, first and foremost, delivering deep environmental sustainability and resilience. So we know on the Cape and especially the Lower Cape, we are really susceptible to climate change and a variety of different impacts from it. We are very mindful in the way that we design for this. So a couple of things I want to talk about specific to Meeting House Road. We wanted to minimize the footprint of the buildings, and that's important for a couple of reasons. One, cost. It's also really important in terms of sustainability and in terms of resilience. The less concrete that's on the ground, the less pavement that's on the ground, the more permeable land we have to recharge the aquifer, to absorb storm water, which we know is only getting more and more intense. We also wanted to really make sure that we preserved existing trees and open space, both for the benefit of the residents, but also for the benefit of the neighbors. And I'll move on. We wanted to use this development to create a variety of different building types to serve a variety of different households that are in need of this housing. We wanted simple, cost-effective building forms. With affordable housing in Massachusetts, simple and cost-effective is absolutely critical. This is the housing work my firm does. We know it well. So a couple of things I'll point out here and what you see, in this case, the roof lines are all oriented to maximize the number of solar panels, but also their performance. So we do what's called passive building strategies. This project will be FIES certified, for people who don't know that, it's an internationally renowned standard for very, very high performance. The new Energy Code of Massachusetts is in part based on the Passive House principles. It would meet the Opt-In Code, should Chatham be considering taking that on. It is also universally designed, both every building and the site. And it's made to be a livable neighborhood for the residents. So then, another view from the other side, we wanted to vary the building types to create a real neighborhood here, but also to serve those varied households. So townhouses for larger families, two-bedroom and three-bedroom. And then we've tucked a two and a half story building with an elevator at the rear of the site so that it's not visible from the surrounding street, or even probably from the bike path. But it has a really key purpose here. This provides, beyond universal accessibility, a place for those who are seniors to age in place gracefully, to stay in their homes longer than they might otherwise be able to do, because the common spaces are in the building. They can get support in this building. They don't have to leave the neighborhood. And I wanted to emphasize a key point that's important to us as well as to CDP and POA. We don't design in a vacuum. We design with the community, with the town, government, and boards, and with the community itself. That's a commitment we make on every project. So with that, I'll introduce POA's Senior Vice President, Julie Kramer.
Thank you. Thank you, Gail. And thank you, members of the Select Board and members of the Affordable Housing Trust for your time today. We appreciate it. As Jay said, we are experienced developers and we are straight shooters. We proposed a project that we feel creates affordable and middle-income housing for the residents of Chatham. We believe our proposal is very much in keeping with the state priorities, the state funding priorities. And we believe it can be built very sustainably. At Meeting House Road, we are proposing using a state subsidy that is a 4% tax credit resource. We are using this in order to deliver some 80% AMI. AMI is area mean income. Thank you, sorry. So we can deliver units to households earning 80% or lower AMI, area mean income. And this also allows us to maximize the state resources available for these types of projects. However, the state does have funding limits, and we have tried to respect those. We are also honest about the need for local commitment of funds in order to be, to have the most competitive project we can apply for the state, to the state for. The state doesn't expect to fund these projects entirely. They are looking for local support. And we applaud the fact that you have found the resources to acquire these sites and for the incredible work you've done in the RFP and the time you've taken and the dedication to find the best developer for these sites. In our experience, a local investment demonstrates meaningful support from the community, and the state is going to be looking for that. On this slide, I am showing four of our most recent projects. Those are the four circles on top. And our proposal for Meeting House Way. We are very fortunate in that year after year for the last four years, we have been able to get our housing communities funded at the state level. And what these circles represent is the various sources needed to build this type of housing. As this demonstrates, the small slice that's green is the local support. So that's either local CPA funds or local Affordable Housing Trust funds. And those have come in at every one of these more recent projects. They also are all built on land that was contributed by the town, another key factor into making these projects financially feasible and reflecting the priorities and needs of the town. We have been realistic in our financing plans and we believe we can deliver something that the town can be very proud of. In closing, I just would like to reiterate that we, that our team brings the development skills, the financial strength of our, of our for-profit peers. But we combine that with a community-focused mission in our nonprofit world. We are a humble group. We aren't here to do things our way. We're here to do things the right way. And that means input from all of you at every level of the town. Oops, let me move to the next slide. POA and CDP have been successful because we are careful stewards of public financing that makes these projects possible. While we are ambitious and innovative, we are also honest and realistic. We do what we say. We are committed to the long-term partnership with the communities in which we build. And this is evident because we have multiple projects in many towns here on the Cape. They call us back to do this kind of work. Here are some images of our, of our work. These are communities for working class and middle-income Cape residents. These developments were all designed with input from neighbors, stakeholders, and community members. They are, they represent specific local needs. And we welcome the Affordable Housing Trust and the members of the Select Board to visit some of these properties and to meet our wonderful management staff and our incredible residents. Thank you again for your time and thank you again. Oh, I forgot the last one. Thank you.
So if that concludes, I would like to ask you if you could stay. We'll have a question and answer period at the end of all of the presentations, so rather than ask you to answer questions now, go ahead, Gloria. Incidentally, I'm sorry, I neglected to say it's not relevant right at the moment, but Town Council, Mr. Patrick Costello is part of this meeting and will be available in case we have any questions that would be necessary for him to answer.
Thank you. And the next presenter is going to be David Quinn from the Housing Assistance Corp. He will be presenting online. And this is for a project on Main Street.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is David Quinn with Housing Assistance Corporation, the VP of Real Estate Development. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to present tonight and say a few words. So Housing Assistance Corporation has, you know, been following this project for quite a while as it's worked its way through the town process, as the town has put these parcels out to bid. And so I think, first of all, just to commend you on the work that you've done up till now, I think whichever option you select, we know there's a huge need for housing at all income levels, rental and home ownership. We've done, as an organization, we've done projects, both rental and ownership, both individually and in partnership with other organizations such as POA, who you just heard from. And so when we looked at this, this two project sites, we really thought, although, you know, we think that there's definitely a great case to be made for a rental project here. We looked at the Main Street site and we thought that this was an excellent opportunity to try to do something a little different and propose an ownership project. So that's what our project is. It's a homeownership project that is targeting moderate to middle-income workforce units. So the incomes range from 80% of area median income up to 200% of area median income. So for reference, those are incomes that range from about $65,000 for a one-person household at the 80% AMI level, all the way up to $250,000 for a four-person household who might move into a three-bedroom, 200% AMI unit. So we really wanted to target, in this proposal, a missing middle household in Chatham and across Cape Cod that makes too much to afford or too much to be eligible for traditional low-income housing, but really can't afford houses on the open market. Really no such thing as a starter home on Cape Cod, and especially in Chatham these days. So that's really what our project is, is that targeted middle-income projects. We knew going in that our projects would likely have a much larger local ask than the other proposals. We assumed that there would be low-income housing tax credit proposals. So we are aware of that and we knew that it would be a big ask. But we did, we thought it was important to present this as a realistic option for the town. If the town wanted to see this type of housing ownership where people can put down some roots in the community, we wanted to have this as one of the options that you consider. So I'm going to share my screen and briefly go through some of the aspects of the projects. Okay, so, let's see here. So our project vision, we wanted to create a neighborhood scale community. So we wanted to target what we're calling a mid-density project. So So you can see from the site plan on the right that we have a mix of duplexes, row homes, and then also building of flat apartment condos in the middle. We wanted to create a really strong street frontage that had a Chatham look and feel when you went by on Main Street, but also had a real sense of community within the community. So you can see there's a common green. We've created enough space for people to have various areas around the project site where they can get together, area for potential play area. And so I really think this is in fitting with what the aesthetic that works really well in Chatham, and is also really functional. It has two parking spots per unit. So what we've seen for homeownership projects is that you really need to have that two spaces per unit. And so I think we were able to achieve a really good mix of project feasibility, maximizing the development of the site, but not straying away from that Cape Cod smaller look and feel. The project was designed by S.V. Design, who's a local architect to Chatham, right downtown on Main Street. So really, it was a lot of a local touch in putting this together. So this is a matrix that just shows the various income levels and mix that we put together. It was a balance between knowing that this was going to be permitted through a 40B permitting process, so we had to have 25% of the units at 80% AMI, the lowest income level, which is really considered a low to moderate income level. And then also, we needed to have 10% three-bedrooms. So that's sort of right off the bat, the baseline for the numbers. And then also, just based on our own experience, working with a lot of first-time homebuyers on Cape Cod, we see a really strong need for the smaller unit sizes. So the remainder of the units, we really kind of balanced more towards the one- and two-bedrooms, just based on the huge need we're seeing on the community for those types of households. And again, income ranges roughly $65,000 up to, for the one-bedroom, 80% AMI, all the way up to about $250,000 for a three-bedroom at 200% AMI. This is just a quick view from the street. So again, you can see that kind of creates that street wall with the community hidden behind it. Very traditional Cape Cod architecture that we think will fit in really, really well with the surrounding neighborhood. You've already seen the slide, but yeah, this is just the site plan. And then here's just some samplings of various of the buildings on the site, again, within that same architectural style, and you get a sense for some of the landscaping and other amenities that are proposed here. And I'll end on this, the financing approach. So again, we knew going in that there's a lot less subsidy for these homeownership types of programs. Actually, there is no state subsidy available for a homeownership program in Chatham. There are some ownership programs for other parts of the state, such as Gateway Cities, which we're trying to get expanded to places like Chatham. But right now, this is a project that would be, because of that, would require a larger contribution of local funds from the community. So we have a Town of Chatham contribution of the land plus $5.4 million. The other sources are funding sources that we've worked with on other projects, including the MassWorks Infrastructure Program, Cape Light Compact Energy Incentives, and then deferring developer fee as well as the sales proceeds of the homes themselves. And in our proposal, we also put together some options to reduce the contributions for the town. I already mentioned other state sources that might come into play. So if some of those state funding sources were to be expanded, there may be an opportunity to bring those into the project, which would really drastically change the picture of the local contribution. But we didn't want to lead with that as a possibility. So what we presented in our proposal was a scenario in which there were no state funding sources available, but really put the power in the hands of the community to decide what you'd want to do here. We would go out to other town community preservation committees to try to raise additional funds as well. That's something that's become very common for projects on the outer Cape. We also proposed potential reduction in units, although we didn't love that idea, but you could reduce the number of units, a slightly less dense site, and therefore that would reduce the overall ask of the town. We also proposed a phased approach, so this could be done in between one and three phases. So if the town really liked this idea but didn't feel comfortable giving all of the funds in one big chunk, we proposed a phasing plan that would allow us to do it over a couple of phases, maybe one phase each in a year and a half, so that the town could spread out the contribution in three-town meeting votes. So that's my last slide. But it sounds like we're going to wait till everyone presents for Q and A, but I look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Dave, and appreciate your sticking around for the question-and-answer period. Gloria?
And the final developer to present will be Penrose. Penrose is the recommended developer for both the Main Street and Meeting House Road site, and therefore they will be presenting both their Main Street and their Meeting House Road projects.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, you guys having us here again. So we've got a couple of folks with me here, and we also have some of our other team on the screen. When it comes to the question and answers, there might be some of our experts, if there's particular questions that they have, they'll be available to answer. So again, thank you for having us again. My name is Charlie Adams. I'm from Penrose. And we'll jump right in. Well, first thing, just like we met all before, one thing I wanted to comment is to congratulate you on putting together a really solid RFP. We were really impressed by the RFP that came out. It was very clear what you were looking for, what the direction was. That's always very helpful to developers, to figure out, to get a sense of what it is you're looking for at this stage in terms of your vision. So really good job with that. So a couple of members of our team here, this is our full team, we didn't bring them, some of them will be on the screen. I want to just quickly touch on a couple of things. We consider ourselves local. There's different definitions of what that means, but local, I've been in Massachusetts for 30 years. Rio Secetti is the project manager, and he's actually grew up on the Cape. And as you heard in the other interview, he's one of the folks that has had to leave the Cape and can't come back because of the housing crisis. So this stuff is near and dear to his heart. Paul Ademan from Union Studios, you'll hear, he needs no introduction. You all know the work that Union Studios has done on the Cape. They're the reason why we picked them, because we know how much they've done on the Cape, how much their design has been well-received in terms of how it evokes the character and feel in surrounding communities, and you'll hear from that. And of course, then we also have Miese Crowley, our landscape architect, who's done a number of jobs with us on the Cape. She's also done work on the islands as well. So Penrose is active in 20 states. We're really organized in a regional manner. So I oversee the office in Boston, which covers the New England Territory, which means Massachusetts, Connecticut, and Rhode Island. We have a long track record of working really well with municipalities and public partners because we really like to work on what we see as a shared vision. That's really important to us, trying to execute what people see and want to do together. So this is the team, briefly, that, as I mentioned, we have that local expertise, strong Everything we do in this particular part of the country is managed by our own management company. We think that's really important, to have our own management company. They're there with us from the beginning, from design, and they've been around for a little bit less than we have, 35 years. We've been around for 50, but they would be the manager. And in terms of what we're trying to do here with wanting to do both sites is we really want to put a full-time maintenance person and a full-time management person on these sites, and that would allow us to do that. We think that's really important. Oops, is this advancing? Okay, so just quickly, our approach, the first thing we do is we immerse ourselves in the RFP, and we study what the RFP is seeking and look at those highly advantageous categories that you've put together and try to respond to that. The second thing is we embrace Chatham. We try to understand the historical and architectural context of the community and do that in a way. And then the next step would be really more community engagement. We haven't had much opportunity to engage the community because we're going through the RFP process. But if we are selected and move forward with you, that would be the place where we would really spend the majority of the next time, working with the town, various boards, local stakeholders, to try to figure out how we could refine the plans and design that we have now in a way that really works for everybody. Once we come upon that, that's that shared vision that I talked about, where we work together to make that happen and put that into place. And we really pride ourselves on our accountability. We don't do a bait and switch. Once we figure out what that shared image is, we'll work with that, even in the context of when there are construction costs and shortfalls. That's been the big challenge the last couple of years. And we're really proud of the fact that one of the most recent deals we did was Cape Cod Five in Orleans. That went through a really tough period of time, particularly COVID. At two different times, there was a $3 million shortfall, and we worked very hard to figure out how to fund that and do that in a way where we didn't have to value-engineer and go back and change anything that we made a promise to the town. And we also didn't have to go back to the town to ask for more funding. So we were very proud of both of those things. And then finally, our hallmark is our execution. Once we're ready to go, we really try to move and move quickly because time is money, and there's a real crisis and a real need, and we want to make sure that things get done quickly. Oops, I think I skipped a slide. Oops, I think one's missing. Oh, sorry, I think these are slightly out of order. My apologies. So again, focusing in on what the RFP really required, and there are mostly the same objectives for both, but each one had a slightly different minimum units and affordability mix. So the Main Street site was affordable and attainable workforce housing. So it was a minimum of 36 units with a preference for additional density and a preference for rental housing. And this project, the RFP, the highly advantageous, was affordable up to 120% of AMI. The other site, Meeting House Road, was a minimum of 35 units, same thing, but affordable up to 100% of AMI. And so that's the basis for how we designed our unit income mix. Let me just go backwards. I'm not sure why this got out of order. I won't speak to this directly too much, but these are sort of the common objectives to both sites. And I think if you look at this chart, you'll see as we go through the presentation that we've tried to accommodate all of these through the design. So I'm going to stop now and turn over to Paul at Union.
Thank you, Charlie. Good evening, everyone. I'm Paul Ademan. I'm a principal at Union Studio Architecture and Community Design. We're an award-winning nationally and regional architecture and planning firm in Providence, which our sole mission is to use the power of design to enrich lives and strengthen communities through civic contributions. We are partners, we are leaders, we are stewards, artists, and we are grateful to be here and contribute to the housing crisis on Cape Cod. Or solving it, I should say, not creating it. We started in 2018 to work with Cape Cod Commission on a project called Community Resiliency by Design, really partnering with three communities, Orleans, Eastham, and Falmouth, to identify opportunities in sites to create housing that's meaningful and in context with Cape Cod and the region. And we really looked at historical precedents that people may not understand as high-density or medium-density housing, but it's all around us as we are in village centers, on country roads. There's larger buildings with a lot of housing opportunity that we see daily. And then two other communities joined afterwards, Hyannis and Sandwich. From that, we established a missing-middle housing publication, and the case study was Cape Cod. And you can go to our website and download this PDF. But we advanced that on our own to create and talk about the missing middle, and you can see the range of housing types that exist on Cape Cod, from a single-family to what we call a manor house, which could be anywhere from six to nine units, but it's a large house that houses, that has multiple dwelling units in it. And that range is the real opportunity to create housing in Cape Cod. And on the left here, I think there's one more slide. Yep. These are sort of some of those examples around Cape Cod, in Falmouth, in Sandwich, where you can look at the lower-left-hand image, at five units an acre, five units on .27 acres, you multiply that, you're looking at a density of 18 dwelling units an acre. What we're proposing is very similar, both at Meeting House and Main Street. And then you can go even further. Our partner and developer and client wanted to push the limit here in Hyannis, right by the ferry port, and we were able to achieve 60 units on 2.38 acres, 25 units on an acre, creating community and density that is very appropriate to the area. So that brings us to our solutions and proposals for Main Street as well as Meeting Street. The site plan is laid out primarily with a frontage to re-establish that along Main Street with facing buildings, with a community center that is anchoring the neighborhood. Inside the community is a community room, a management office, a fitness room, as well as a maintenance storage, and a shop that fronts onto a common green. And it's really flanked and arranged by a very simple vehicular and pedestrian circulation in two points of ingress and egress for fire safety and emergency vehicles, as well as calming traffic measures. And so as you come in and loop, all the front doors and the front porches face the common green, which Miese will talk about a little bit more, and how we've programmed that.
Thank you for having us tonight. I'm Michelle Crowley, I'm a landscape architect from Boston office, and I've done a lot of work with Penrose over the years. One of the things that I really enjoy working with them is that they have very high standards for the landscape, and you don't always see that with developers. And so that's been something I've been very impressed with. And the landscapes, that a lot of times, projects get value-engineered, and the landscape is always taken out. With Penrose, the landscape is extremely important, so people feel like they're at a home that isn't just landed here off of the moon. And so it's always wonderful to work with them. For the site plan, do you want to go to the next slide? We have about 50% of the site is open space, and so it's leaving about an acre and a half for open space. We've designed the sort of a village green, so all of the houses could have used the space in the center. We've got a playground with sort of natural play and a pergola, so you can have grilling and picnicking and really create a community, as well as community gardens. We've got some bike racks near the community center, and then a large green for playing or relaxing or walking your dog, and really feels like a village green. We are using all native plantings with the trees, as well as whenever we have stormwater, we're using rain gardens in the, sort of behind the houses. And then there's green space in between the houses that will also have a native planting of shrubs and some perennials. And I think that's about it.
For the architecture, we also took into consideration the Community Design Technical Bulletin, which was published by Cape Cod Commission, as a guideline for communities around Cape Cod, to have guidelines in reviewing and promoting context-driven and sensitive developments. Our focus was to respect the New England maritime village feel with appropriate context and cluster development, regionally appropriate forms, materials, and detailings that really reflect simplicity and understanding for carpenters that are able to build simple details, appropriate eaves, flash appropriately, things that carpenters in the area know and can do well, that is timed and tested materials and forms. And with that, Miese and the Horsey-Witten Group, our civil engineers, have really And with that, Mish and the Horsey Witten Group, our civil engineers, have really focused on low-impact design strategies and comprehensive stormwater design. The focus on sustainability, the projects are committed to FIAS and LEED Silver certifications with focus on Energy Star certification. And we would be using existent native vegetation and revegetating any disturbed areas that, as Mish said, are really important in considering the landscape to create a sense of place. These are the proposed architecture that are simple, white-on-white is our first proposal to respect the Chatham, historic Chatham architecture. But you can see that we bring some individuality with proposing some colored front-entry doors. But each of those doors is to every individual unit, and that's something that was very important for Penrose to develop, that there wouldn't be common corridors or a common entry stair, but everyone, as they arrived at the site, could understand what is their front door and enter right into their building as they walk or drive or bike home or leave. The variety of housing types, because from one bedrooms to three bedrooms, of townhouse styles to flats, ADA accessibility is also included in many of the units. This is just giving you an idea of the plans which you've seen in a packet, so I won't dwell on those very long. This is the community center that I mentioned for Main Street with a community room, fitness room, and management office, all fronting and looking back onto the community in the common green. Next, I'll talk about Meeting Street. This is a very challenging site, as everyone knows. Right off of Meeting House on the edge, there is a ravine that has to be contended with. And our proposal is to access the most developable area of the site with a small bridge that brings you to a cluster development that is able to preserve as much vegetation and woods between our proposed development and Meeting Street House, Meeting House Road. For it, it's a similar layout in terms of a smaller common green. It's a little bit more compact, but we've established a play area on the lower right. We've established a connection to Twine Field so that residents can go back and forth and enjoy the open space that the town already has established. And then there's a connection to the Old Colony Rail Trail, a direct pathway and a small bike shelter repair center right along the Old Colony Trail.
Sure.
Did that go? Yep. Nope. There we go.
So to me, this is the inverse of the other, of the other site, where the, the landscape, their backyards are all around them instead of in the center. This is a playground all around. The ravine would be my favorite place to play, and you also then have the connection to the Twine Field. And so it was really important to us to maintain that entire ravine area and really leave it as undisturbed as possible. It's extremely steep slopes, and it is carrying water from across Meeting House as well. So it's a sort of a main drainage way. And so we really wanted to keep this compact to have it the most open space available. We're just showing just some images here that the bridge could be like potentially a wood bridge that feels a little bit more like a country bridge going onto the site, as well as with a pedestrian path, using a nature play for the playground. But again, kids have a much larger playground all around them. And here, the pergola could be a little more rustic, so it's feel, it's not as much of like the village green that we showed at the other site. And again, community gardens here that are on the north side of the site, because that's got the most southern view of that. That's.
Great. Thank you. And I'll just flip through some of the architecture very quickly. Simple detailing, lap siding, double-hung windows, insulated fiberglass doors, and a muted natural color palette for each of the buildings. So I'll return it back to Charlie. Thank you.
Great. I don't think we need to spend much time on this one, but one, one thing to point out, we are designing this to passive house standards. There's some confusion. When you do passive house, you do have to do solar. Sometimes when we do passive house, we say we're going to do the passive house but not go get the certification. So our goal would be to do passive house, and I know that we talked about solar-ready roofs. The idea would actually be to try to do some solar actually on them. I know that was one thing that came up. Okay, so just quickly, the, the unit mix that we have here is reflective of what the state priorities are. So the state looks for 10% three bedrooms and about 65 ones and twos. That's what we reflected. The income mix is, is in line with what the RFP was looking for, for highly advantageous. One thing I think that we also talked about in our, in our meetings, too, is that, you know, we always are, we always look to do, if we can, if, you know, market, market rate units, affordable units, and low-income units, because we like to say that anyone can live there. So I know in our last interview, we had some conversations about taking some of those 120% units and moving them, them to market, and we can talk about that and what that looks like. So this just summarizes what, whoops, is that? Yeah, sorry. So this, this sort of summarizes what I just said in terms of what the, how the advantageous So getting at that quickly, I don't want to spend a lot of time on the sources and uses, but just the thing to point out is that we are, we do know that you paid over 2.09 million for the site. So the idea would be that that would be listed as a use, and that we would be looking for the town to take back a note of 715 on that. We also would be looking for 500,000 of Chatham CPC funds. So that gets the town the net reimbursement of 815,000 for that. And so the reason why I was talking about the, the other slide about the 120% units, we also talked about, you know, those, those 120% units generate 100,000 of workforce housing funds. So to the extent that, that there's an interest to move some of those workforce housing to market rate units, that's where that might be able to come from. Meeting House Road, same idea, same concept. This was, you were looking, this is what the highly advantageous was for that site, with 83% of the units at or below 7, 80% of AMI. Same concept here, that you acquired this property for 500,000, I believe, and that we're looking for a $200,000 contribution from CPC, which would net the town $300,000. And we could have the same discussion about the workforce units. Just the timeline, this timeline fits, I think, with what you're trying to accomplish. We'd have to move quickly, but we think it's achievable to work with the town, if we're selected, to move into an LDA, and then to move forward with the permitting and approval process to be in a place where we might be able to submit an application in the next funding round. Okay, so this is the final slide, just to kind of wrap up. These are sort of the, the things that are sort of most important to us. And I want to focus on, on the pipeline in particular. I think that's really important. The, and it's really important to us. It's really important to promise that we can deliver on this. And so also, I know there's a, one of the things that we can accommodate for this one is that we can, we can put this development into the next round. I know there's a lot of discussion about, in Orleans, on that project and Governor Prince. What we've actually done is we've actually withdrawn our application from that. And so that actually allows us even more opportunity to prioritize this development. And the reason we did that was because back in, we submitted back in November for that site and told them at the time, we could promise that we could prioritize this for the next round. We really like to deliver on those promises. That's really important to us. We want to prioritize you, and we didn't feel we could continue to make that, that promise to, on the Governor Prince project. So had a great conversation with Kim Newman, and, and we're moving forward on that, and it's, it's a great outcome for that, for that site. Proven track record, we, as you can tell, we have a successful development record with the towns that we've been satisfied with. We think we're really responsive to our stakeholders. We really get in that shared vision of trying to do what is in the best interest of the town. We have an experienced team. I think our architecture is adaptable to changes as we go through the process. And I think we've shown we're resilient in changing markets to try to generate the resources that we need to do those, to meet those needs. And again, I think the final thing is our execution focus, being able to deliver when we say we do. So we greatly appreciate your time and attention, again, and we look forward to answering any questions you have during the question-answer period.
Thank you very much. I'm, I'm going to, oh, please, go ahead. Were you going to say something, Gloria? I'm going to offer Mr. Levitt the opportunity, if he'd like to put his presentation up now, or if you'd like to wait, that's up to you.
Yeah, we'll wait. Phil, Phil will do the presentation.
Okay. And, and before we open it up for questions and comments from the, from the public, I'm going to offer both the Select Board and the Affordable Housing Trust Board the opportunity to make any comments or statements or anything that they, they would like to say about it. Do I hear anything from the, either of the boards? Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks to all the presenters. I appreciated that. Because of the open meeting law, I was not able to be present at the original presentations. I know I was a present on the 5th of June because I had a previously scheduled commitment that, that was previous to my appointment to the Evaluation Committee. So it was good to hear these presentations tonight. But I have reviewed the materials that were shared with everyone, and, and I respect the vote that was taken. I did submit a written comment that I understand was read to the committee. However, I disagree with the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee regarding Main Street. As was pointed out, four of the 10 evaluations supported Housing Assistance Corporation. I was among those four. I do think HAC is the better option. I think if you examine some of the categories that Gloria was kind enough to set out in the memo, and I applaud you, Gloria, for this matrix, I do think that there are areas where HAC's proposal surpasses the competitor, which is Penrose. First of all, the architect is a local architect here in Chatham. I think that's a plus. The number of units, HAC is proposing 36 units, and Penrose is proposing 48. I do go back to the presentation at the forum that was conducted by the Affordable Housing Trust, I think back in January, when there was a presentation from, I believe, a landscape architect, architectural firm from Western Massachusetts, that laid out 50 units and 60 units. And my sentiment and my sense in watching that, which I did from, from home, was that there was considerable resistance to that number of units at the Main Street location. I think the biggest plus for HAC on Main Street is the ownership model, because I think that really shows the opportunity for people to put long-term stakes in the community in some larger measure than you might get in rentals. I also think that the ownership model as presented by HAC reaches the, the missing middle more, more so than, than the other model. I do notice as well that there are six structures on the HAC model as opposed to nine structures on the Penrose model. And when you look at the construction and lease-up or ownership opportunity schedule, HAC starts construction at the second quarter of 2025, and leases, I should say, sells in the third quarter of 2026. Penrose starts second quarter of 2026 and leases up in the fourth quarter of 2027. I think, and you step back from these details, that the HAC model is more in keeping with the character of Chatham. I think it's very well laid out. The homeownership concept, I think, is a very strong model. And I suspect, I'm sure all the developers put forward their proposals with some acknowledgement and understanding of what we have heard from, from the people in Chatham, but I think HAC probably may have, may have paid, well, I suspect they might have paid really close attention to it. What are the challenges with the HAC model? The money. They've asked for $5.4 million, and I understand that there is, there is concern that the town would not be willing to put up that kind of money. Well, ownership, as was pointed out by the HAC representative, doesn't currently qualify for, for significant state funding, although there is apparently some legislation afoot that might make some changes in that regard. I think, though, if you look at what are the funding sources that are available within the town of Chatham currently, this is manageable. First of all, the housing trust has $3 million. If we could get a significant contribution from the trust fund, the amount of money we would have to go to town meeting for, whether it comes in the form of borrowing that would require a two-thirds vote, or from free cash, which would require a simple majority vote, would be significantly reduced. We also should understand that we have legislation pending on Beacon Hill that Mr. Dykens and I strongly advocated for, that would set aside 1% of the short-term rental tax for attainable and affordable housing. I, I'm hopeful that that bill will be passed, and that's another source of funding. I know that there has been significant concern about the willingness of town meeting to appropriate significant funds of money, as demonstrated by what took place at our most recent annual town meeting. But as we discussed in the postmortem by the Select Board of the Town Meeting votes, there were significant funds that were appropriated for our capital budget, our operating budget, for the school budgets, and for the union contracts. And there was a negative pall over the town meeting, I think reflected from the articles dealing with the airport. I think it would be a misreading of town meeting to conclude that town meeting would be unwilling to support something they like based on what occurred last month. I think the taxpayers of Chatham would rather pay for something they like rather than have something they don't like imposed upon them for free. Another challenge is that this is a novel proposal, as I understand it. This is not my area of expertise. But why not take the opportunity for Chatham to become the model for doing something unique? We've done it before. I think we're the only municipality in the Commonwealth that has a SRTAX to fund our OPEB responsibilities. That was something that Mr. Metters and I, and Mr. Daniel from the Finance Committee, in our capacities at that time on the OPEB trust fund, put forward, and the legislature bought it. And it's something that we should be proud of. I think that, finally, with all due respect, I would prefer to do business with a Cape Cod-based, not-for-profit organization. And people can differ about that, but that's where I'm coming down. So in sum, I think that the vote that was taken by the Evaluation Committee was, in all candor, myopic, because I think it fails to see the opportunity that lies ahead for workforce and attainable housing. And with that, the decision of our chief procurement officer is going to be very difficult to make, but I would encourage her to reject the evaluation. to make, but I would encourage her to reject the Evaluation Committee recommendation and award the project on Main Street to Housing Assistance Corporation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything else from the board? Mr. Matters?
I'll make mine a little more briefer, just kind of summarize. So, a couple of things. First, I was, I did have the ability to attend the initial presentation. Select Board member slash trust member Davis was absent, so I was invited to participate in that meeting, and I found that, first of all, very, very beneficial to get firsthand presentation on all the projects. One take back from that initial presentation, though, was, A, although these are very large projects for Chatham, we haven't had these opportunities for a long time, they are small in the scheme of what some of the responders to RFPs consider what is viable financially, putting their resources together. So, I was disappointed to leave the meeting, knowing that the responders were willing to, you know, bid on both RFPs, but unless awarded, both RFPs really weren't interested in doing just one. It just wasn't as feasible to put the resources together for the return on that. So, that was, I think that made, frankly, awarding or reviewing the evaluations a little more difficult in the back of your mind, knowing it was an all-or-nothing type of tone that was taken to some level. On the Meeting House Road projects, both responders, I scored relatively close to each other. There's a lot of issues with, you know, addressing the abutted concerns, but at the end of the day, Penrose scored a little bit higher on that. So, then I moved my evaluations over to the Main Street property, and when I went through the scores, I just went through the scores, then tried to compare, and at the end of the day, Hack was higher, much higher in my score than the previous, when in Poa and Penrose. And I looked at the model, and I will admit, the RFP that was issued was especially looking for a rental-type model, leaving a little bit of room for the homeowner ownership, but frankly, I think the homeownership is what Chatham has been asking for for a long time. You dig deeper into it, it's a lot more complicated with certain elements of finances. There is a big ask for the town of Chatham, but I do think it is something that the voters should have an opportunity to weigh in on, because I don't have a crystal ball. The voters may support it, they may not support it, but I think that Chatham shouldn't be taking, making decisions based on, well, other towns may do this or may do that. Like, we should be leading the charge. And I think on the Main Street property, my recommendation, if I had been in attendance at the meeting on last Wednesday, would have been to advocate for the Hack presentation to be the preferred option for Main Street. So, you know, I appreciate all the time and effort put into these presentations. I really hope the public will be able to speak up tonight and kind of, you know, weigh in, but I do think that we collectively, as a community, we need both homeownership and rental property units in the town. We need a balance, both of sizes, locations, to make affordable housing where we needed to go. I disregard the comments that that ship has sailed, you know. It's only, the ship has sailed only if we give up on it. So, we still need to move forward on affordable housing. I think we can make great opportunities with these two projects. These are two very large projects for the town, and I think we can make the best benefit of it. But I have very, very strong preference, or had a very strong preference for Hack on Main Street, and I would still be willing to award Penrose on Meeting House, but that was where my recommendations were going to lean to. So, just want to put where I was going. I hope the board listens carefully to the public, and the town manager listens to any comments that are made tonight, and we move forward on this in as positive a position as possible. So, thank you.
Mr. Robin?
I wasn't gonna talk, but I feel compelled to now. I was in favor of Penrose for both properties. I will say that Hack's proposal was beautiful, was beautifully done, but I don't think homeownership is correct, and I don't think the property was done densely enough. Density, from my perspective, is based on what the appearance is. It's not how many bedrooms or how many units are on a particular site, it's what the design looks like. You could put less units on, and it could look worse. You can put more units on, it can look better. I thought the architecture of both proposals was very well done, within the height limits that we, very close to the highest limits that we recommended, and in keeping with the neighborhood proposal. Rentals are needed. We need rentals badly. Everybody talks about homeownership. It's my personal take, and I think in some of the discussions with different people that we met with as a board, rentals are the most needed at this particular point in time. I think housing opportunity is very important. You know, myself and other people that have been involved with Habitat for the Community, we all agree that housing is, ownership opportunities is very, very important. We have housing opportunities coming forward. Stepping Stones Road is a wonderful place to have housing opportunities. It's in a neighborhood of individual homes, whereas the Main Street property, the Buckley property, is not. In fact, the individual homes are to the rear of the property with a couple on the Westley side. So, I see the housing opportunities is that we should be going as, the head with everything is, once these things are given out and developers picked, we should immediately move forward with Stepping Stones for housing opportunity, ownership, and 127 Old Harbor Road. As far as Meeting House goes, Penrose, their proposal was excellent, it was creative, it used the natural contours of the land instead of regrading the entire site, gave it the most distance from the road. The bridge was a very creative, would you like to speak for, sir? Oh, excuse me. You know, very creative way of getting in and dealing with the problems of the access and the driveways on the abutted property, I'm very respectful of that. I do have a problem with, I've been to many town, I've lived here for 52 years, I've been to a whole lot of town meetings. This was one of the strangest town meetings I've ever sat in. Yes, there were a lot of things done for schools and things like that, but when it came to housing, we, the contribution of the Community Preservation Committee, which has usually been, I think, around $500,000, and normally passed on a voice vote, was $750,000 this year, and passed by seven votes, only seven votes. So, to think that we can go to town meeting and ask for $5.4 million, which could be less, and it could be $5.4 million, it could be more, because we're talking about what might be available, not what is available. We had a senior center, which was enormously-
Excuse me, could we keep it quiet in the room, please, while anybody is speaking? Thank you.
And I'll yield if you'd like to talk before I finish. Thank you. The senior center lost by one vote, twice, one vote, and then when it was brought back the next time, it didn't even come close. So, to talk about going in front of town meeting, or to say this was a productive town meeting, I find, as far as affordable housing, clearly, it wasn't an easy town meeting. We didn't get, we wouldn't have gotten 2/3s, even for money that's specifically set aside for affordable housing. It was commented that we're unique with OPEB, and I agree with that, we are, but we're also unique in our complete neglect of affordable housing for the last 20 years. We've done nothing compared to other towns on Cape Cod. It's only in the last few years that the Select Board, to their credit, has stepped up and purchased land for this purpose. And now for us to not go forward and use it to its maximum benefit is foolhardy. We, as far as taking most of the money in Affordable Housing Trust and putting to this, I wouldn't agree with that as a member of Affordable Housing Trust, because the money should be, we should have that money available for other opportunities that come along, and which are, in fact, starting to come along. People are becoming more aware of this. We've had conversations with people about maybe donating their homes, or giving to them at reduced prices, mixing affordable housing in existing neighborhoods, which was done on Crowell Road and has been done in other neighborhoods. This is what that money is for. As far as going to town meeting and saying, you know, if we were going to town meeting and saying we needed nothing, I think we'd probably get 2/3s vote, but when you start talking about 2 million, or 4 million, or 5.4 million, and what might happen at the State House, I mean, we voted three times to make a new separate Affordable Housing Trust at town meeting, and it didn't pass for, was it five years, I think, it took to get a new Affordable Housing Trust? So, I think the statement by a previous speaker that we think the town will go ahead and do this is a naive statement. I think we're in very conservative times right now, and I think that the Penrose, both, there's a time for Hack, and I think it's on Stepping Stones or on Old Harbor Road, and I think the time for affordable housing and the rental is at Penrose, at Meeting House, and Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on either of the boards at the moment? Go ahead, please.
Thank you. So, I just wanted to elaborate a little bit about the opportunity that we have here and how unique it is. I have advocated for affordable housing for a very, very long time in this town, without much success. I think we need housing on all spectrums, from all incomes, sizes, and everything. So, any housing is good, but I do think, in regards to the Buckley property, that our Main Street property, the town, we went to town meeting and asked them to help purchase that property, and they chose to do that and supported us with the specific understanding that we would be trying to develop attainable housing on that property. If the trust just buys a property, we're limited on the AMI. We might, that might change down the road, but right now, we're limited on how high we can go with that AMI. So, the Buckley property offers this really unique opportunity, and there's an expectation of the town for us to try to go to those higher AMI points. Now, for the most part, there really isn't a lot of opportunity to do that, and when, if you look at Penrose and even Poa, they came in, their highest was 110 and then 120, which is great, I'm all for that, but to see that the Hack property actually did hit those higher points, which, we're not going to get an opportunity to do that again in the very near future, to have a process like this that we can develop, to hit those higher AMI points. I often hear that they, being anybody who's working or advocating for the town, they don't listen to the public. When I listen to the public, I've heard, year after year, that desire, the desire to have those higher AMI, if we could do anything to help that missing middle, all the people who don't qualify, and this could be that property. And homeownership is just, it's the gold standard of the place you want to live, and to put roots in the town, to develop some kind of equity, even though it's got a deed restriction on it, but to really have a home. We do need rentals. I agree with you, we need to build more rentals, but I think this property, with this proposal, offers such a unique opportunity for us to deliver what so many people, over so many years, have been asking for. And every time I have the conversation, I say, "That would be great, but there's really no way to do it." And here we have a way to do it. Now, granted, we have to go get some funding. That's going to be on the public. If they want to support it, whatever that funding breaks down to, that's going to be for them. It won't be the $5.4 million, whether we can do it in phases if we need to, we can have the short-term rental tax, but there will definitely be an ask from the town, a substantial ask, and you guys are going to have to support it, but I'm willing to take it to the voters and let them weigh in. That's what they want to do, that's what everybody wants to have a voice in this process, and I would like to give them the opportunity, and if they vote it down, we'll move forward and try something else. Just a slight correction to what one of our members said. The Poa program, they are willing to do, develop a Meeting House without getting both properties. So, they're willing to do that. So, Penrose, their formula had, both properties had to be, no, you could just do Main Street, but we couldn't just do Meeting House. Is that correct?
Yeah. We want a full-time manager.
Right, so I understand that. So, that's the limit, but Poa was willing to just do Meeting House, so that's an option in the future. So, those are my thoughts on the opportunity that Hack represents, and I realize it's a long shot, but I also think the community has a right to weigh in on it, and, like I said, this is what I've heard all my years of advocating for housing, is that they want what's here, and I'd like to take it to meeting, I'd like the public to weigh in on it, and let, and like I said, for the funding, we could do a phased-in project, but that's going to be up to everybody to decide. But I don't want to let this opportunity, this opportunity has so much value, and we still have the land, even if it doesn't go through, we'll try something else next time. And I think it's worth the risk, I think it's worth, it's what I've been working for, trying to deliver a product and a value to the community, it's what I've committed to, trying to deliver the best product for you folks. So, that's where I stand. Thank you.
Shereen.
Thanks. Mike and Carolyn, I appreciate your comments, and I agree with you on a lot of the points that you made, and I think during the deliberations, I was coming down with Hack until the final vote, where I just, I voted for Penrose. And the reason why was that, you know, while the Hack proposal, I really love the idea of homeownership, was addressing the missing middle in what we do need here, and it's a novel idea and concept, the requirement of the $5 million in supplemental funding from the town really presented a problem for me, and it's not just from this last town meeting that I feel we are struggling with that 2/3s vote issue, it's been several years, and I'm not sure when we're going to have better trust, or public trust, in the capital projects that the town is doing going forward. And so, it really stopped me in my tracks to support the Hack project at that time. And the state needs to pony up its, you know, and get us our home rules so that we can make these good, valued decisions with a strong monetary constitution behind us. So, I just wanted to put that out there. It's a struggle for me to have voted yes for Penrose, but I just want people to know that that's the reasons why I voted that way.
Anybody else on the board at the moment? Bruce?
When we started this process, most of us believed that homeownership, there was no way it could be made to work. When I saw the Hack proposal, I thought about the difference between renters who don't have a great deal invested in their community compared to people who own their own homes. I think that if we let this one go, we will be sorry, that the number of units of homeownership this would create, and from the people I know, homeownership is the overwhelming choice of the citizens of Chatham. The financing is going to be a problem, but as a previous speaker said, we bring it to town meeting, if it doesn't pass, we think about doing it in phases, we do, we go to Plan B. Since I saw that proposal, it's been my strongest hope that we could get it done. The Poa for Meeting House, where Penrose wouldn't be interested in doing that by themselves, looks like a great plan. I like their design in some ways a little better than the Penrose, but to me, the focus is, let's get some ownership. That's it.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Thank you. I just would add a couple of thoughts. I also rated in favor of Penrose on both projects. I think that early, the earlier comment about, well, we don't have to go for the $5.4, we can go to the trust and get some money, that, I believe, as a citizen, I would view that as all the money, even if it was given to the trust at some point, it was given to the trust by the town, and so I think it's a part of the town treasury, if you will, that would be committed on this. I also see that there will be folks who will view this as not just the $5.4, but also the $5.4-plus we're giving- 5.4 plus, we're giving them the land. And that adds up too, because the town put out the money to buy the land. I also was intrigued with the Hack proposal. I think it's got a lot of very interesting features, but I think it's also, might fall into the category of a bit of an experiment. And I don't know if we're going out for what I perceive to be kind of the first of this next phase of housing development in town. I wouldn't see it as an acceptable risk. And then my final point is, the discussion about doing things in phases, there's a significant amount of infrastructure which is going to have to go in to service the whole site. And then if you're going to stop and wait, how do you finance that excess infrastructure, which is going to be needed for the next phase or the next phase? So I think breaking this down to three projects of 10 units each just wouldn't work. So I, I do, as I said, find a lot of intriguing qualities to the Hack proposal. And I also think that homeownership is a wonderful thing to pursue. I just don't think, in this particular case, it would be advisable. So I would not support that. Thank you.
Leslie?
Since everyone has spoken, can't be left out. I, I also found Penrose to be the strongest of all the proposals, and I was very for Penrose. I did because it was a very organized proposal. It addressed 100% everything we asked for, meaning they listened to the community, they listened to us, and they carefully formulated a plan to do that. I think it brings a nice amount of housing without too much density. I think the, the design is beautiful. I think it fits in the area. I think the massing fits in the area. I think there's a big difference, and I'm still trying to get my head around, between multifamily homeownership and rental and single-family homeownership. We have programs that do single families for affordable and different income levels. I am not familiar of a lot, with a lot that do condo type. And so I question the value of that to our community as well as the plan to me. I, I couldn't find the substantial execution. It's felt like an experiment, and I'm not ready for us to make that experiment come through.
So I guess, I, I need to say something. I, I, and I don't want to go through a whole elaborate, I voted for Penrose. I, and I did that with confidence, but at the same time, and, and I have a tremendous appreciation for what Hack does on the Cape and, and what it could do with the project they proposed to us. Don't mistake me. I, I, I think it was a terrific proposal. To me, and, and let me just pause and say one thing here. I, I hope that you out there in the audience recognize the diversity of opinion that was very, very strenuously advocated in our conversations as we went forward. It's not as if there was any single point of view or any dominating point of view. Everybody spoke up. You've, you've heard representative arguments that were repeated, you know, and reprised and, and refined and exchanged and so forth in our discussions. Where we came out, I, I felt very good about because not only was there that diversity of opinion, but as I think Dean referred to, that we didn't have unanimity. And I think that's, that, that's a real strength for the process to date. My view is very simple, and there are only two, two features to it. To me, it is incumbent upon these boards to select an option that can get done and that can get done on a reasonable timetable. I see if we go with Hack, and I may be wrong, and, and I'm sure there are those on the board and in the audience who disagree with me, but I see a, a protracted, lengthy period of seeking money, advocating in Boston for funding that's in the Affordable Homes Act that maybe we can get. I mean, I will tell you, I've been banging on the doors that, that I know up there to get our Affordable Housing Trust expanded to attainable housing for as long as I've been a select board member. And, you know, maybe it's going to happen this year, but I don't, I, we'll see. They keep telling me, yeah, maybe, 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 possibly June, possibly July. That is a contingency, seeking funding that is not even legislatively authorized to me, that's, that's chasing a will and a wisp. And, and when you turn to the, the Chatham side of the funding, the, the, we can discuss whether the, the town meeting would approve it or not. I, I don't know. I would be very concerned about that. And unless we select, as I understand what's been proposed to us, it might change, but unless we select Poa for Meeting House Road and Hack for Main Street and then go to a town meeting to ask for funding, we're basically betting everything we have invested in those two properties on that, on that, on, on, on Hack's ability to, to do the project. That's a lot of money. Even if the shareholder vote were not there, to me, saying that we're going to invest, right now, we have $2 million in the, in the, in the, in the Main Street property, take it as it's proposed, another $5.5 million, that's $7.5 million to build 36 ownership units. All right? For people who, and, and I, I'm going to assume that all 70% that we can get local are local. All right? But it's, it, that's a, that's another contingency that I'm, I'm very troubled by, particularly when this town has said, "We don't want to spend money. We don't want to spend $6 million. We want, we want to spend $8 million. We don't want to spend $10 million on our seniors, people who live here and need the services. We don't want to spend almost $3 million to improve infrastructure at the transfer station, which benefits and services our town, the people who live here." Same thing with the waterfront bond. That benefits people who live here, the fishing community, people who need and, and desire access to the water. I, I'm, I'm just very concerned that the, when you pile up all of the, excuse me, the contingencies, that it's, it's just too much risk. Now, I'm not saying therefore let, we go to Penrose because, you know, that's, that's all we can do. Or because it's free. It's not free. It's not going to be free. We go to Penrose because to me, that's a good partner to go with. They're all good partners to go with. But I have a lot of confidence in Penrose being able to execute here as they have said they would do. And for those reasons, I'm, I'm supportive of their proposals. So with that, I will accept Mr. Messina.
Thank you.
And then...
I apologize standing up. I'm getting close to my bedtime. I want to say congratulations to all of you guys. You've done a very good job. And I'm pleasantly surprised in, in what's happened here. And I, this is your first, it's not going to be the last one. And I think as David indicated, there's been all 20 years and nothing has happened. And we have an opportunity. And Shereen has just left the room and yourself, Mike, and other members of the select board, you know, you, you've energized the community. I, I would put the town meeting aside. It was kind of a crazy thing. Must have been the water, something, you know, in terms of what happened and what didn't happen. But I think the decision on Penrose is a good decision. Okay? I think, as I say, the, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. We have an opportunity to do something. 99% of the people who come live here or rent here are not going to be from Chatham anyway. Okay? Let's, let's get real. That's what we're talking about here. So you have a situation, and what you're trying to do is to help solve a problem that exists regionally, nationally, you know, and, and God bless us, we're, we're trying to do something. And I think that's, that's positive. The, the concept of, of trying to do more in terms of, of ownership, boy, that's a tough one. And I, and I, and I don't know how it's going to happen. I bought a house $150,000 20 some years ago. It's now a million and a half. You know, it, it's crazy. We're a different kind of community, and we've got to face reality. I'd like to say a couple of specifics specifically. I live in South Chatham off Cocko Cove. I guess I'm a nearer butter, about a half a mile or so, you know, from the proposal. And, and I think that Penrose did a very good job. I mean, that, that bridge was unique. I wondered how the heck we were going to solve that one. And that's great. I'm a little bit concerned, it's only one way in, one way out, because the fire department can have an issue with that. And I'm sure you'll solve that. I do want to make a couple of quick comments in terms of the, the access. And the design is not frozen per se. I hear things that, there'll be other, there'll be more opportunity as, as you get closer to it in choosing to, you know, dot the i's and cross the t's on the design. Specifically, the access from the property to Route 28. You know, right now, this is a little isolated, little, you know, we need, we need to put some sidewalks in to get the people out of this little enclave, you know, onto 137. And the sidewalks, which we spent, just the town, the state spent a lot of money putting crosswalks to get into, into the town. I had a couple of notes that I made. The bike path connection, I think you're obviously going to try to do that. I know there was a, there was a neighbor who lives nearby on the property who was very concerned about his driveway. So I didn't see that necessarily addressed in the design, but I'm sure hopefully now that you guys got the message and that, that will be addressed at some particular point. But again, in summary, without saying a lot of words, because there's a lot of things happening, a lot of people have something to say. You know, I think, I think you made the good decision in Penrose. I would just comment, I did speak at town meeting, not necessarily positive about the process. Got, I got a, a smile out of my friend Mike. And, and I was reflecting the community. Hopefully, we've all learned from this process, that when you do it again, and this is not the last time, I mean, it can't be 20 years before we do it again, we got to think about the process and listening to the people up front. And I think that was the, that was the concern at town meeting. Ah, you guys already made a decision, you're not listening to me. And I know it's difficult, you can't commit upfront, but somehow we've got to make it clear to the people that we are listening and we're going to take those concerns under consideration. It was, we kind, we kind of missed the boat on that. And I think that was reflected back into town meeting. The airport was another issue. Who the heck knows what's going on with that? And my boathouse not coming back yet, that's, I don't know. So I, I think you've done a good job, congratulations, and I'm glad you guys are doing it, and I'm not. I'll stick to my historical commission. I would make one comment relative to the design, Penrose. It's a little too cookie cutter, okay? A little more variety in the design. And I'll make, give you copies of something called A Sense of Place, which is what Chatham looks like. And I'm actually, the historical commission is working on a pattern book of the design of houses on the Cape and in Chatham. And you get, you know, I think you had, in one of your slides, you said historical. Well, didn't see much historical in, in your design, but I think you have an opportunity to excel on this thing. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Ms. Gibbs?
I have some comments and then some questions. I'm going to just focus on Penrose, since that's been the recommendation of the majority of the board. I think it's really hard to visualize from renderings that you see here without any context. Most of my comments are about 1533 Main, but they also pertain to Meeting House because the, the buildings are similar. There are 10 structures on that project, and the buildings are absolutely huge. This is the one that everybody saw up there. The stacks, there are six of them, are each 35 feet high in height and five feet over the maximum permitted in Chatham, and they're 70 feet wide. For reference, the brick portion of our current community center is 170 feet, excuse me, 107 feet wide and probably 25 feet high. Each of those structures that you see, the six of them, will be two-thirds the width of the community center and five to 10 feet higher. They are significantly large. The smaller ones that are on this rendering are 30 by 50 feet. That's, that's half the size of the community center. In terms of, there are no private patios or private space for any of these units. The community building, that is the orange building, that sits right on the Main Street, is 100 feet wide. It's the size of the current community center in terms of width, and it's about 25 feet high. So it's, it's pretty comparable to that building. I'm not really sure why it has to be so big, because half of the space are offices that I assume are for Penrose. The village at Nauset Green in Eastham, which was developed by Penrose, has 65 units, but it's on 11.2 acres. That's 5.8 units per acre versus 1533 Main, which has 16 units per acre. In terms of landscaping, I know the renderings look nice. You see those lovely big trees. But the fact of the matter is that three acres is going to be clear cut. It has to be, to put in all that construction. And very small vegetation is going to be put in there. And I'm only going by the packet, but they show the vegetation, the native vegetation they use. And they are all deciduous, except for one holly, which is very slow growing. So there is not going to be any shielding. We had been assured there'd be shielding off of Main Street. So what you're going to see from Main Street are 11 buildings that are extremely huge. They're massive. In terms of occupancy, there was a question, I said, "Well, how many people can be in a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom or a one-bedroom?" And there was really no definitive answer, except they believed it would probably be a one-bedroom would have two people, two-bedroom would have four, and a three-bedroom would have six. But it could be higher. If they go by the state standards for sanitation, it could go up higher. You only need 100 feet per person. So that would mean 172 tenants at 1533, and 42 at Meeting House, there'd be 150 tenants, for a total of 322 between the two properties. One of the problems I had, and maybe this can be addressed later, is when you look at these, there are six of those stacks that are the large buildings. And according to this plan, there are 26 two-bedrooms to get us to the 48. However, according to the, if I, you look at the renderings and the floor plans, in each of those six buildings, there are five two-bedrooms in each of them. That's 30 two-bedrooms right there. And so when you extrapolate out, you say, "Well, if that's 30," and then you add the rest, it looks like we are substantially over 48 units. So I don't know if the renderings are wrong, if the floor plans are wrong, but I think that's something that has to be looked into. Because my numbers came out by just using what's in the packet and the floor plan, that if all six of those buildings have five two-bedrooms, the number's closer to 66 than 48. In terms of, and one of the problems is in terms of households, I'm, I'm concerned about the parking. It's very limited. There are 113 spaces for 322 tenants. They, they talk about 1.3 parking spaces per unit, but you have to talk about people. The units don't drive, people do. And households are not defined. So it's not necessarily going to be a husband and wife or a bunch of little kids. It could be six 25-year-old people who live together. That's considered a household, and they all have to go to work. So they're going to need more than 1.3 cars. They're, they're also with 100, in, within the 113 spaces... There, there also, within 113 spaces, there are gonna be 24 spaces for electric vehicles. Now, in Massachusetts, a fully electric vehicle costs about $48,000. And I don't think there're gonna be that many people buying electric vehicles there. They might have hybrids, but they can take gasoline. And so that substantially reduces the parking available, because they tow you if you, if you park your car in EV space and don't have one. So I think that that number has to be substantially reduced. And the other thing is, there's no guest parking. You know, if somebody wants to have people over, it's already substantially reduced, and they take up the parking space. What happens to the tenants? They have no place to park. The rationale by Penrose in this proposal for only 1.3 spaces per unit was to, quote, "limit parking spaces to the minimum required to promote alternative modes of transportation, such as cycling and walking, that are adjacent to public and retail amenities of the town." In my view, this is controlling residents' ability to move around and go where is needed. What about winter months? They can't get on a bike. They can't walk. Or when it's raining or snowing, especially if they have children. At minimum, there should be two spaces per dwelling. I don't know how residents of these units are supposed to get to work, get their children to school, sporting events, doctor appointments, or the hospital. And there are no food stores or drugstores within walking distance. They should not be required to take public transportation for the most basic necessities, but that's what this plan does. If they reduce the number of units and improve the quality of life for the people living there, I think it would be better. I'm also surprised and disappointed that rents for units are, that are considered affordable, when a two-bedroom can be $2,847 a month, and a three-bedroom can be $3,292. I don't consider that affordable, and I think that defeats the purpose of what we're, our objectives and what we're trying to accomplish. One more.
So I just keep in mind, we're, we're trying to give everybody a chat.
Okay, but I'm the first person from the public.
I, I understand, but I'm just saying there are a lot of other people who'd like to speak.
I understand. The floor plans don't specifically indicate them or their location, so I would like to confirm that each unit will have a dishwasher and washers and dryers. I know, you said they would, but I, I just want to confirm by Penrose that that will happen. In terms of the deed restriction in perpetuity, all 90 units between the two properties that are at or below 110% AMI will be deed restricted in perpetuity according to their respective AMIs. So if it's an 80% AMI forever, it will remain an 80% AMI. Despite what we've been assured of for years, it's unlikely that most who live or work or have children in school will qualify financially, and that's where the middle group is in trouble. And certainly not most town employees, particularly if it's a two-family income. They will simply not qualify. If Chatham doesn't have enough people to qualify financially, can the developer, who will end up owning the land, remove the deed restrictions despite the fact he's receiving tax credits, tax incentives, and loans as conditions of those restrictions? I don't think that's possible. And if not, units will go to individuals who have no connection to Chatham. So why are we doing this without first having a needs assessment and housing production plan that won't even be completed until July? And I was wondering if any board members have actually visited the village at Nauset Green, or the Cape Cod Five Orleans by Penrose to see the quality of the construction. And based on, and one final thing, the Massachusetts Housing Partnership strongly recommends and will provide funding to retain an independent affordable housing financial consultant to review the financials before a developer is chosen, as its highly specialized field. Most towns do so, but we have not. I would ask why not, and I would request to be done before any final decision is made. I believe this design needs work. The structures are too large. It is too dense, with no private space for families, with insufficient parking, lack of needed transportation. I don't believe it meets the objectives or expectations of Chatham to provide a stable quality of life and home environment for every demographic, demographic, including families and seniors. The problem you run when you have such low AMIs is no one can ever save money. If, if a spouse gets a job, they have to leave. It becomes a trend in society. They, everything is driven by their income, and if they exceed it, they have to move. And then new people come in, and then the next year, new people. And I didn't think that's what we wanted. I thought we wanted a stable environment for people to work and live and have children there, to keep our schools open, and to provide a quality of life that we would expect for ourselves. So I don't think people should be required to get on a bike. I'm sorry. Or to walk. I don't think that's the right attitude. I think their quality of life should be like everybody else's. And if it means reducing the number of units, let's do it. If it's gonna cost more, let's do it. But I think, as Mr. Nacastro said, Chatham can lead the way on this and, and make something really special. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead. Mr. Richardson.
Excuse me, I'm taking a deep breath. This has been a very interesting meeting. I almost feel like I was in a corporate environment here. I'm Phil Richardson. I've been a summer resident for 18 years. I've been on the SRAC for 16 years. I've been in real estate for 55 years. And about three years ago, I made a presentation to the select board about my thoughts for Berkeley, the Buckley property. And I, we, I sort of updated it, and I'd like to show what I thought we could do now on the Buckley property. And I think the Buckley property should be all ownership, and I think that Penrose should be doing the project in Meeting House.
Yeah, excuse me.
I think a lot of residents probably have an idea of what should go on Buckley. I hope you have a very good idea.
I think a lot of residents probably have an idea of what they believe should go on Buckley. I just don't know if we're having, this isn't an RFP. This is individuals.
And, and I appreciate that, Carolyn. We, we have indicated that as part of his comment, he is welcome to show what, to, in effect.
Well, I have a packet here, yeah. So I, I have it here.
No, I understand. I understand.
So you can give him a platform.
Yes.
Okay. Briefly, my architect, who's from California, wine country, on the left, we did a single-family, 31 single-family units. On the right, we did five four-bedroom apartment houses and 16 single-family residences. So how do I move this forward? Just do the, uh-oh. I'm not fair with this.
Phil, it just, if you could.
Roll it. Tap it. If you want to give me a hand with this. Sorry. Ah, there. This is forward. That's forward. Okay. Okay, there we go. Thank you.
Phil, I'd like you to keep in mind that there are a lot of other people here that would like to speak.
Yeah, sure. No, I'm just gonna run through this.
Just address your, 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 your concept here, but this is not a competing proposal.
No, no, it's, it's showing what I think could be done, and it's.
Thank you.
And, and, yeah, okay. So this is the rendering of the, of the property with 31 houses on it, and, uh-oh, but anyway. So, and this is just another rendering. So here are the, the ground shots that, that we show. And the idea is, it's just a Chatham small, Chatham village, which we all like and which we were used to. And some more shots of what it would look like. And then these are the houses that my architect has designed. And he has two, three, and four-bedroom homes. And then here is the, the four-bedroom, four, four-unit buildings that are two, two stories tall, and there's five of those. So this sort of concept, I think, can work. There is a developer that has built some projects in Brewster, and he can do it with no public funds. So if this property was given to a local developer, and he could do only 25% affordable, he wouldn't require any money from the town, because the profit he made in the 75, other 75 homes, under 200 AMI, would cover everything. So that's what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The gentleman who's been standing and waiting, go ahead.
Sorry, my parents made me short. My name is Neil Hearn. I'm actually born and raised in Orleans. I will only speak for one minute. I understand that you all are all Chatham residents likely and are desperate to have your voices heard. So thank you for the opportunity here to speak. I am here this evening. I have recently just requested all of the email communications between Orleans's town representatives, staffs, select board members, and Penrose pertaining to the ongoing RFP process for the Governor Prince property in Orleans, receiving over 1,800 emails. What I uncovered was collusion between the Orleans Affordable Housing Trust Board Chair, who has since stepped down, and Penrose's Regional Vice President, who is here with us this evening. Their collaboration attempted to turn a process which by law is supposed to be a fair and open competition into the exact opposite of open and fair. In an email from Penrose's Regional Vice President to Orleans Select Board Member Kevin Galligan on April 29th, 2024, it states, "Kevin, do you know anyone on the Chatham Affordable Housing Trust Board? While I am not implying the same collusion is occurring here in Chatham with your RFP process, I did want to make everyone aware of what has been happening in Orleans. I will leave copies of the statement that I made at the Orleans Select Board meeting last Wednesday, as well as two email threads that kind of, that best illustrate my concerns over the lack of fairness that occurred during the Orleans still ongoing RFP process. Having just learned here tonight that Penrose has withdrawn from Governor Prince, I would note that that withdrawal coincides with the public airing of the collaboration discovered in emails between Penrose and some Orleans stakeholders." So thank you for your time this evening, and thank you for allowing me to participate in your local democracy.
Thank you. Gloria? Just give them, please, to the clerk here.
I just, I'll keep this brief, I promise. I am the abutter, Mr. Messina, that you were speaking of, about the access issues. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Once again, we see a proposal, and I don't see my house. I am a direct abutter. This has happened repeatedly, even from the Bartlet Group. I am not separate from this project. I am a part of this project, and I, I never see my house. So to see an aerial view of what I'm talking about would make it much more clear to the people sitting in this room. But I don't have that. That being said, it seems to be the Penrose plan that is most likely to be chosen, despite my disappointment with the density planned, and this could possibly increase. This plan cuts across my right-of-way with a bridge to the complex. I own this right-of-way in both directions, and unless an arrangement and plan to my satisfaction of a separate driveway is met, I will not relinquish that right. I fully intend to assert my legal rights in this matter. I've requested a separate driveway in previous meetings with the trust and the board, and my request remains the same. I need privacy. I need trees. I need a buffer from a huge complex that you are dropping right in my lap. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, the lady in the back there, yes. Yes, please.
Good evening. Paula Wiseman, Kendrick Road, Chatham. I'll be brave. Thank you, Elaine, for your detail. We needed to hear that detail, okay? I know it was, it seemed, seemed long, but we needed to hear what she had to say. And I really appreciate all that you put into that. I'm just gonna go over 10 quick points. First of all, you guys need to not put so much pressure on yourselves to get this done so fast, okay? We, we, we pay you guys to help us in this process, and we appreciate the efforts you put in. I don't know what you're laughing at. Well, well, somehow, we're helping you, okay? Okay. Excuse me for not knowing all the particulars. So anyway, you still work for us, right? Right?
I work on behalf of the town.
You work for us. Okay, okay. Sorry, I lost my place. Okay, so anyway, my, my point was, is, you know, don't, you don't need to put so much pressure on yourselves. We want the right thing to happen here, and I think most of you do too, okay? So I think that there seems to be a lot of pressure to get this thing done, and I think it's okay to put on the brakes. Yeah, maybe it's been years you've been trying to do this, but it hasn't been right, okay? It hasn't been right. So number two, you know, and if we do like it, as a couple of the board members said, we will vote for it. We will appropriate the money, okay? There, there were some great presentations here today. It was fast. I didn't get to see a lot of detail, but there were some great presentations. Number three, you know, somebody mentioned about town meeting, how that some of the town meetings, we haven't appropriated funds. We have to follow a budget, okay? If we don't have the budget, we shouldn't be spending the money, okay? I think a lot of people are using a lot of funds, and we're getting into debt. The whole country is in an extreme amount of debt. Again, I thought the reviews were a bit fast, yet they were very, they're very, very good, but I think Elaine had some great questions that we need to get answered. We need to do priority setting. Why do we have to do, do both projects at once? What's wrong with doing one here, and then wait another year or whatever, and do the next one? There's nothing wrong with that, okay? Number six, here's number six. I think that's about it. Oh, so somebody talked about how there isn't a need for ownership for the young people, for ownership in this town. I know numerous people that are in their 30s and 40s that would love to live down here that cannot afford it, okay? Some of us aren't wealthy families that are gonna give homes to our kids. Maybe when, when I die, but I'm an average Joe, and, you know, my house, I can't just give a house to my kids. You know, so there's, anyway, so, so again, I go back to, you know, maybe do two separate projects. Nothing wrong with that. And, you know, some of you are mentioning, I don't know if you were complaining or not, but I think you were, neglect of affordable housing, you know, it comes from leadership, okay? If, if you think that there's been neglect of affordable leadership, it comes from you guys. Something's not going right that's not making us happy back here, so that the affordable housing hasn't happened. So it starts from the top. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Carol.
Carol Gordon, South Chatham. And I'd like to take just one moment before I ask my question, and just ask if we could please declare a moratorium on the rehashing of the so-called negativity at town meeting, and just move on from that. At that meeting, Chatham residents voted their, their voice, and I feel that they should be commended and not chastised for doing that. So I would just like us to be able to just say, okay, it's done, and we move on. So thank you for that. And also, I'm wondering how you can make a responsible decision if the housing needs assessment hasn't been prepared yet or hasn't been finalized. So I was just wondering about that. I guess that's not out till July or August, and that will be published. So how will that work with your decision? Anyone? Okay, all right. Thank.
Gloria, go ahead.
Sure, I'm happy to speak to that. So the housing needs assessment draft was presented at the Affordable Housing Trust meeting, what day? A couple weeks ago.
Two or three weeks, about more like three weeks ago.
For the end of May. There are a few tweaks that still have to be done before it's finalized, and then the next phase is to actually apply that to the housing production plan. But that said, we do have a housing production plan with a housing needs assessment from 2018. It identified a significant need for affordable housing, and the town's made practically no progress toward that. So that need hasn't evaporated in these five years. In fact, it probably got worse. So we've all seen the draft Affordable Housing Needs Assessment, and it hasn't really backtracked on the need that was already identified in 2018. So I think with confidence, we can all say that we do need affordable housing. think with confidence, we can all say that we do need affordable housing in Chatham based on the 2018 plan and based on the forthcoming 2024 plan.
Thank you, Gloria.
Yes.
Just ask, Gloria, it's every five years? That's part of our production plan for the affordable, for the?
It is every five years, yes.
Yes, Stephen.
I was gonna, Steve Buckley, I was gonna ask a clarification question before Frank Messina, but he had to go home, he said, so, and then it went from there. So I think it would clarify, it would help public comment if they knew exactly where things are now, what the issue is, who's the decision maker at this point, and then they could focus on that decision rather than talking. I'm very tempted to say, oh, if only we could have a little bit of that design and a little bit of that design, but that may be premature at tonight's meeting. So it's just my understanding, and please clarify.
Okay.
The town manager makes the final decision as chief procurement officer.
Are you gonna answer your own question, or are you gonna let me answer it?
No, no, I, here's the question.
Okay.
My question.
Okay.
Is the town manager, the chief procurement officer makes the final decision, and you all are just making recommendations? Or what role do you all play, and is it going to happen tonight or later? Thank you.
Do you want?
Sure, I can speak to that. So a town manager as a chief procurement officer is going to make the award to the successful proposer. I have a recommendation from the evaluation committee. That recommendation is for Penrose for both properties. My plan was to, when I'm ready to make the award, bring it back to the joint executive authority, who is the select board, and the Affordable Housing Trust, and have them affirm or confirm my decision to make the award. It's been the practice here for the select board, and prior to that, the select board has the Affordable Housing Trust to be involved in land disposition as well as acquisitions, and I'd feel more comfortable if the joint boards had affirmed my recommendation for the award.
Okay, just one follow-up. What if, is there any way that the process allows for, yes, some of this process, some of this design and some of that design, as far as, does it have to be A, B, or C, and not, no other composite option?
I'm gonna ask John Avery, who's done a bunch of forty Bs, to give us a sense.
Town council?
I understand. Give us a bunch of, a sense of his experience, not, we'll have Pat speak to it, but what your experience is post-recomm, I'm sorry, post-award in terms of the kind of question that Stephen is asking.
Well, I think that the typical, if there is such a thing, the typical forty-B process would be where a developer identifies and acquires a property or the rights to a property, and then they make, they start the process by dealing with the, with the town and the various boards, usually the Board of Appeals or zoning Board of Adjustment, it's sometimes called. They will make the presentation to that board, and that board has public meetings. There is an opportunity for input. There's a timeline which, within which they have to make a response. Sometimes it gets extended, but there's a timeline for that, and the details, if this was your question, the details come forth in that process, and there's a negotiation between that board and the developer. And so I think what we're talking about here is what's called a friendly forty-B or a local initiative forty-B, the other way around?
Small F friendly forty-B.
Okay, yes, a friendly forty-B with a small F, where it's a process of negotiation. And that's kind of what we've started here in the sense that we've gotten responses. Those responses will then have been reviewed, will be reviewed further. Our chief procurement officer will make a suggestion. As she has said, she'll be looking for us to kind of say, yeah, we, we think that's a good idea. And if that person is, or that respondent is selected, then you begin the process of negotiation. So there's a timeline there which is really driven with a starting point being selecting a respondent, and then it moves through a statutory process.
So having heard that, let me offer Pat Costello an opportunity to address that question as well. Who's the town council? Pat, are you with us?
I am indeed. Good evening.
Good evening.
In essence, this is the contracting procedure, and the town initiated the discussion, shall we say, by issuing the RFP, wherein it set forth certain criteria. The developers have responded to that RFP with their own individual proposals. Whenever a, a plan is submitted under Chapter thirty-B, revisions can be made to that plan by negotiation between the parties. In my view, the negotiations would have to remain within the parameters of the RFP and the plan, the proposal submitted. So there is room to negotiate and discuss revisions to whatever plan is ultimately chosen here, but you can't go completely off the reservation. There has to be obviously a link or a connection between the RFP and the proposal as submitted, and the final product that's negotiated should fall within the parameters of those two documents.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to interject a legal question to Pat. The town manager has indicated that as a chief procurement officer, she will make an award, and that she plans to come to the two boards for affirmation of that award. I have two questions. First, is, is that, is that affirmation process legally required, or is it simply institutional support that she's looking for? And secondly, would there be separate votes by each board so that a majority vote in each board would carry the affirmation? Thank you.
Sure. As drafted, the RFP indicates that the awarding authority is the town. The town of Chatham ultimately makes the decision here. By law, the chief procurement officer, which is your town manager, has the authority to award contracts and execute agreements of this type. I believe that town manager Goldsmith is, is seeking the affirmation of support of the respective executive authorities that do have proprietary interests in these properties before she makes that final decision. So to answer your question, I do think she has the legal authority to award the contract on behalf of the town of Chatham, and I, I do understand that her, her proposal to go before the two executive bodies is more of a supportive rather than a legally required step.
Let me just follow that up, Pat. It was my understanding, however, that the select board, at least with respect to Main Street, the select board needs to approve the land development agreement. Am I correct about that?
You, yes, yes, you are. You are. Keep, keep in mind, what we're talking about now is the award of a contract pursuant to the RFP. As I noted at the outset, this is the contracting procedure. As the process moves forward with the successful proposers, there will likely be a purchase and sale agreement and a land development agreement executed by the executive authorities, which would be the select board and the Affordable Housing Trust that have care, custody, and control over the property.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Ms. Schneeburger.
As I heard the question, it was when the public will have opportunity for public input on the designs and on the proposals. And I took note in all of the proposals of the up and forums that they're planning on doing throughout the process. So while the forty-B process is happening, and they're going to town approvals, there's also time set up for community input.
And I'm gonna add to that. If you go look at my evaluation sheets, you'll find that appended to my Meeting House Road evaluation sheet is a very specific comment that is addressed to whomever is the successful proposer, that the, that the abutters' concerns and desires be addressed to their satisfaction. So, and, and with respect to Meeting House, I'm sorry, with respect to Main Street, again, I address, I suggest you look at the comments I appended there, which address a number of the things that I have heard over the last several months from the, from the public.
I'm just waiting for a time. I won't say any, I won't take up any more time, but there are points that I would like to make as the seller, who's been thinking about this property on Main Street for thirty years, and have lived off Cape in ten different types of garden apartments, townhouses, and so forth. And it's been lightning speed. And so I feel I have not been allowed, even as a regular citizen, to share my two cents on what's going to happen to the property. And so, anyway, but I'm looking forward, if there are further opportunities, that's why I asked for clarification. What's the process? When do I get to say that piece? So.
Thank you.
And I'm not going to say it tonight because it has, it was not made clear ahead of time. Thank you.
Yes, this gentleman here?
Lou Hy, South Chatham. Perhaps as a follow-up on this a little bit, if I understood correctly. Based on a, a, a meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust Board in January or February, my impression then was these issues were coming up of who has control, and that at least on a significant part of the issues, funding and decisions, that the board thought that they had control, that the select board did not have, and that the voters did not have any access to for accountability. So part of this, it may be the town that actually technically awards it, but I think what a lot of us want to know is, can the voters have any, be able to vote on these very important issues? Because in reality, it's a very small group of people that are making decisions that will affect people in other neighborhoods, you know, and the people there, South Chatham, West Chatham, they don't have any voice on this. Voice, you can, you can say something, but if you're not gonna, you say, yeah, we listen to it, that's different than being able to vote for it. So I think the answer, and Carol, I apologize about not bringing you up to town meeting, but I think that town meeting, people were saying something. What they were saying was, they have lost confidence in the town government, and it's specifically about not having the voting. It's not just a matter of listening, but the, have the voters be able to vote on it. And I think that's the one way, is to somehow figure out a way to give the voters approval on the decisions that are being made that are going to affect them and their neighborhoods.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Levitt. Just, my intention here is to hear all, what we have from the public, recognizing that it's eight fifteen. We've been at this for three hours or almost, but I, at the conclusion of when the public feels that they've had their shot, then go back to the three proposers, and hopefully they've collected their responses and their thoughts about the questions that have been raised, and offer each one of them an opportunity to say whatever they would like to say, to answer, whatever. Go ahead, Rick.
I'm Rick Levitt from West Chatham, and I have a smile on my face because Union Studio Finney has made it to Chatham. Wow. I've only been asking for that for five years. Union site plans and architectural designs for Meeting House Road and Main Street are superior. Missing middle housing is alive and well. Thank you for all the work you do. Union Studio's superior plans are not only harmonious with Chatham's built environment, but they also provide the diverse housing need, housing needed to solve Chatham's housing crisis. Union is the leading design firm for mixing affordable and attainable housing on the Cape. As mentioned, advising Orleans East and Bonsable, Falmouth, and Sandwich on each of those towns' housing initiatives. The Cape Card Commission sponsored this extensive professional effort by Union Studio. The Commission's Affordable Housing Strategy Report stresses, stresses that the state subsidized affordable housing program does not work on the Cape, because it excludes attainable housing for the most part. Absent legislative reform that's been discussed here, a different financial model is needed involving a local subsidy that supports attainable housing development. The Commission urged the towns take bold, innovative measures to solve the Cape's housing crisis. Half-measures don't solve Chatham's housing crisis. Here's an interesting idea, and I just, we just learned tonight that Penrose has resigned from the bidding in Orleans. That leaves Hack and Poor, who made a joint proposal to Orleans. Hack and Poor jointly made such a bold, innovative proposal for mixing affordable and attainable housing in Orleans on the Governor Prince property. The proposal includes both rental and ownership. Union Studio prepared the site plan and architectural designs for Hack and Poor. You, you can consider negotiating with both Hack and Poor, utilizing Union Studio's plans and architectural designs for Meeting House Road and Main Street, and including a mix of rental and ownership housing. You have that option. We should welcome this kind of bold, innovative approach to solving Chatham's housing crisis. It means that today's ineffective, inefficient state housing program will be abandoned, making room for a more thoughtful and informed local and regional housing program, responsibly meeting Chatham's diverse housing needs. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rick. This gentleman right here, and then, yeah, Bob, and then hopefully we can wrap up and, and let the proposers conclude. Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Henry Marselli. I live on Thirty-two Jesse's Landing, and I'm a summer resident here. We built our house about six years ago, and I look directly across the street. There's a vacant lot there now, but there probably will be a house if Bill Marsh has his way, I'm sure. But my question is, someone raised it, I think it was Ms. Gibbs, is it? Yes. Is the, the height of the buildings as proposed by Penrose, could somebody just qualify that? Is it thirty-five feet? That's a question.
Subject to confirmation or correction from Penrose. I'm gonna tell you, I believe they have told us they are thirty-five feet.
Okay.
Is that, is that correct?
Plus or minus.
Yes. Plus or minus, yes, thank you.
All right, that's, I, there was also a plan, I think, that I looked at online about the West Chatham community and neighborhood, and I thought there was a restriction in there that I read that said, nothing shall exceed thirty feet. Is that correct?
You read that correctly.
Okay, so how can this be representative of the neighborhood if there's, none of the houses there are thirty feet probably, let alone thirty-five feet? And if the restriction is thirty, I'm just kind of perplexed about that. First of all, I want to thank you all for your good work, so I.
Thank you.
I'm not here to throw stones. I'm just here to kind of understand what's going on.
I'm going to ask Penrose, and, and by the way, I'm gonna ask the others, Dave Quinn and, and Jay and, and the Poet team to, to address that question as well, if you would, please. Sorry, Bob, yeah, go ahead.
So Bob Worchafter, I'm on the Planning Board and the Energy and Climate Action Board. And I, I guess I'm a little And I guess I'm a little, I have to agree with people who thought that the process was a little quick and perhaps not done in a way that would build confidence. No one ever came to either of our boards to talk about any of these projects, and I wish you had. I know you don't have to, because authority, you don't have to, but if I was building a house, and my brother was an architect, and I didn't talk to him, I would think that was a bit irresponsible. So there's a number of things that we've been talking about tonight that had you come to the planning board, we would have told you. We've spent three years planning that, that area, what the houses should look like, what structures are allowed, what kind of planning designs there are. And we certainly would not have allowed a 35-foot structure in that, or one quite as big as that. The second thing is, we never would let anywhere a new residential housing with 1.3 spaces. That, that's just not possible, because there's two, it's a two-person family, that's two cars. You're lucky if you only have two cars in, in most of these apartments. And unfortunately, Elaine, the new code does require the number of EVs that they're putting in, but other than that, I agree with you for once. And, and, so, so I don't know whether these are correctable, because I really didn't understand Mr. Costello's definition of what's negotiable and not negotiable, but, but those are flaws in, in the bids. And, and they're not comparable. When somebody's offering you two parking spaces, and another bid is only offering you 1.3, I don't know how you guys equated those two, or picked the one that had the 1.3, when another one was offering us more parking spaces. I, I can go on with that, and it's late, but I want to get to the energy side. They're not equivalent energy bids. One of them has solar. One of them took the time to plan the layouts of each property so that it would maximize solar. The other one says, oh, we'll, we'll get them ready, and, but we're not paying for it. That, I'm sorry, but we passed a law, a bylaw, that requires capital expenditures in this town, for public, public capital expenditures, to pay for, to look at the most cost-effective means of building those properties. Now, again, I don't know whether that has authority here, but you have a responsibility to the people that are living there, and to the town, to, to try to do that. And you haven't. And that, that's a little bit upsetting to me, that you're going to pick the one that doesn't have solar, when there's one that's just as nice, and it, and it's included the solar. And if you're, if you made your decisions on the slightly higher rents, that are, lower rents for, for the one than the other, but you didn't count the solar benefits, or the higher energy efficiency that was built into the, to the POHA, or whatever it is, you've, you've made a, a decision that's probably not based on, on the right thing. So I don't know whether this can be done later, but if it can't, I, I don't know how you can go forward with what, what the RFP is giving you.
Thank you. Thank you. If there aren't any other comments, going once, going twice, I'm gonna, in the same order, I'm sorry, do, do we have, oh, we have somebody online?
No, no one with their hands up.
Okay.
Yes. Yes. My hand's up.
You, you just made it under the wire. Go ahead.
Okay. This is Nicole Stern.
Forgive me, Ms. Stern, I'm just, this is the last public comment, and then we're going to go to the developers.
Well, I think that this meeting is pretty important, and I think the public, if there's anybody else there or online, should be heard. We stayed a lot longer at other meetings that were important to the select board, that were important to the town manager. So I take a little objection when you say, you know, it's getting late, we need to wrap it up. I understand that. Okay, moving on. This is the third time, once in a letter, once at one of your board meetings, where I tried to talk about town meeting, and I'm not going to apologize for that, and the trust that the board is losing from the public. And that was reflected in town meeting. But no matter how many times it comes up, you just choose to ignore it. It's like you're listening, but you're not hearing. And I don't think you're hearing a lot of what's being said today. And how can we even move forward at this point, after hearing what that gentleman had to say from Orleans? And now you hear it again. Maybe there's something going on in Chatham, too, that we're not aware of. Town meeting was sending a message. And the message is, we don't trust your judgment. You don't hear us. You may listen to us, but you don't hear us. And this was their voices letting you know that. So if you bypass the people in town, the citizens that pay for everything, you're just going to reinforce exactly what they're thinking. So I would be very careful about that. You need all of us, not just for this project. You need us for other projects. Yes, maybe it's more expensive than it should be, so maybe we spend a little less money on something else that the voters don't think is as important. We all belong to this town, we all live here, we all pay for everything that we do. We all have a right to our opinions. And for the last two, three years, it seems like our opinions don't count. And like I said, you listen, but you don't hear, and you just do what you want to do. And they have gotten that message. Just needed to say it one more time. I think you need to put this all on hold. I think you need to know what's going on in Orleans. And I think you need to get the public involved now, before you make any decisions. Thank you very much, and good night.
Thank you. Thank you. This is the last one.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, you can go first if you'd like. I just had some very quick, like, lots of...
Okay, okay, all right, all right.
My name is Judy Patterson, I'm in West Chatham. I think what Nicole said was great. This has been a really long meeting, and I understand what everybody's going through. It was very surprising to me to see Mr. Levitt and Mr. Messina flip tonight. The high point of my night coming here was seeing that gentleman from Orleans, and I think all of you are making a huge mistake not to look into that. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. And the gentleman in the back? Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Mr. Swenson, sorry, thank you.
Peter Swenson, West Chatham, a butter to the property. In, in direct conflict, I have not been able to find anybody that I've talked to that favors the density of what they're going to do to one, the Buckley property. And the other thing that happened to me, when I was listening to people, they were talking about the odds at town meeting. The idea is you present the project to the town meeting, you let the voters tell you, which is what they're supposed to do. And I don't think we want to avoid a town meeting, because we don't think it'll pass. And I just, there were comments made early on about, can't take it to town, because we got turned down before. So I'm, I'm opposed to the plan going forward as it is, and would like to see it reworked. My problem is density, height, and we need to have the people of the town tell us what to do, and listen to them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Coburn, do you want to address the comments, questions, as you see fit? Maybe try to keep it to five minutes, if you can.
I most certainly, Mr. Chairman, can do that, and do it in less than five minutes. I first want to answer one direct question, and Julie will, has a few things I can say as well. We, sir, have lower rents, and we're going to provide solar panels. So we have been, in our proposal, have been able to accomplish both. I think tonight's forum demonstrates how important an extensive and robust community engagement process is, and how important it is to meet with residents, to hear their concerns, and to work in partnership with the residents of the town, to, to create a project that everybody can support and believe in, and meets the desperate needs that this community faces for affordable and attainable housing. And we have a track record of doing that. We permitted a project in Wellfleet through the 40B process. And so that, once the developers accepted, that's the next step, is that we put together a comp, an application for a comprehensive permit, and in doing that, we meet with stakeholders, we hold open meetings, we knock on the doors of every single abutter, and get their input, and explain the process. And we work together to achieve the very delicate balancing act of putting together a project that meets the community's needs, but also that is economically feasible, and can attract the millions of dollars in state and federal funding that will be required for Chatham to be able to meet its affordable housing needs. And we have a track record of doing that in Wellfleet. And in fact, we permitted a 46-unit project in Wellfleet with a three-story building with an elevator in it, to house singles and doubles and seniors, and end their social isolation. And we did that in six meetings with the zoning board, and with absolutely no public opposition, because we took our time to listen and work and collaborate with the community. And I can promise you, that's our approach. We have a track record of doing it, and I really hope that we will be chosen to do that. Julie?
Just, just a quick, brief comment. This is hard stuff, guys, we get it. I am on the Affordable Housing Trust in my town. I know how important these decisions are. And this is the way the process works. You submit an RFP, you do have a review committee, they, they make a decision. You know, I don't always agree with it, but then it moves to an award. And, and when the 40B is, is underway, that's when the public comment needs to be heard. Hearing about solar panels, that, that brings joy to my, you know, my face. Understanding that density, the height, all of that gets worked out during the 40B. And, you know, I just want to comment on what Jay said. We do it differently. We reach out before the 40B gets started. We talk to the neighbors, we talk to the town folks, the stakeholders, the people that care about energy, the people that care about density. That's how we do it. And, you know, the, if, if we're not chosen, we're not chosen. And, you know, I can appreciate that, everyone's not always a winner. But I would just suggest that everyone here show up to those 40B meetings. That's where your voice is most important. Thank you. Have a good night, and happy Father's Day.
Thank you very much. Much appreciated. Dave Quinn, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm still with you.
So, have at it.
Okay, well, I'll just close by saying thank you for the opportunity. I really appreciate the chance to, to present this proposal for ownership. I definitely don't envy your position in making this decision. I understand it's a really tough decision. But just listening to the public comments, appreciated all the towns and residents' input, and then kind of echo what Jay and Julie just said. A lot of those types of decisions on exact details of the design, the final touches, a butter input, definitely get addressed through the 40B process and before, with our community outreach process. And then just briefly to, to mention some of the specific questions on design, on height. So the 30-foot height limit, that's something that we very intentionally wanted to stay under, based on the zoning, and then also just the, keeping in with the Chatham look and feel of the, the project. And then also parking, as well, was a very intentional decision to have those two, two spots per unit. So that's all, thank you. We hope to be awarded and, and work with you on, on this and/or future opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tenrobs? Go ahead.
Great, thank you very much. So there were, I think there was a bunch of comments. I can comment on a couple of sort of the larger ones that, that people had. One thing is with the parking ratio of, of 1.3. Our experience has been in, in Eastham that that's sufficient, like the, that our ratio is closer to a 1.1, and we've actually got a 1.25 ratio there in Eastham, so we feel it's, it's a, it's an acceptable measurement. That's definitely something we can, you know, look at as well. If it means, mean, if it has to be losing units, that's what the, that's what it would mean. But I think trading off between units and parking is something, I think, that would be important to the town, to get, to get more units. But that's something we can take a look at. There was a comment about our community building that I wanted to address, too, about the, the size of it, and one, that's one of the things we didn't talk about. So we, our community building is something that we do on all of our sites, where we do this kinds of density, or this kind of number of units, I should say. Where the community room, the community building, I should say, includes the management office, the maintenance backspace, and there's a huge, a large community room, usually with some outdoor space, and sometimes we even put a fitness center in there. We also have a, oftentimes we'll put a, a separate office for a social services coordinator, because we oftentimes have a, we call a social impact coordinator. That's someone that works for our management company, that works and helps and deals with the residents. So the fact that it's large, and what we do with that, that building, I know there was some comments about it being large, we think it's a good thing it's large, because we also, then, that community room is actually opened up to the public. So that's what we did, if you go to, down at Village Inn Ossie Green, you'll see that community room getting used by Girl Scout troops, by book club, by garden club. So we really try to make it available to the entire community. One thing we didn't hit on our plan was, and, and if we are selected, and we can go through this, was on the Meeting House Road site, we did spend some time trying to address the abutters' concerns, and I apologize, we didn't actually talk about that in our presentation. But if you can see, we tried to look to see where we could set the development, where we could keep the road underneath, and could also look to redo the driveway. And part of our plan would be there to try to figure out how to keep the driveway, where it is that the resident accesses, or, or at our own cost, figure out how to move it, and actually make improvements to it. Another, just a couple of quick things to, to think about. In terms of folks that, that might live here, or that, or that, that, who it would serve, I talked to our manager at Village Inn Ossie Green tonight, just to confirm. About 70% of the residents there are from the Cape, so the, the properties do serve residents from the Cape. When people get a certain level of, and then she had some really good stories to talk about, about some of the folks that live there. So there are folks that work, I think, for the fire department that work there, there's some school teachers, there's a lot of folks that work in the, in the service industry that support it. She recently told me about two individuals that went to nursing school to get their nursing license. And one of the things that's really fascinating about that is that they're in the development, and they could become nurses. They actually might qualify, they might, their income might exceed what the current limits are. But the rules in tax credit properties is you can go up to 140% of area median income. So those folks can continue to stay there. So those are some good examples of folks that have moved in, have gotten and got the education, have improved their, their financial being, and can still continue to, to live there. The rents that, we also want to talk about, the rents that we did in the chart, those were just clearly based, those were based on what the current maximums are that are allowed under the different categories of AMI. We have to do a market study to figure out if those rents are actually the rents that could be used, and that would take place after we get selected. So we showed you those rents to show you what the maximums could be on all those. If they're not achievable, they're not achievable, and we'll drop them and, and have them as part of the market, I want to say that. One other small thing I wanted to say, when I, when I said a friendly 40B with a small, if not a capital L, I wasn't disparaging that we wouldn't be friendly. That's a technical term. So in order to do a 40B, you have to get a PEL, and different agencies can issue them. If you're using tax credits, you have to go through... If you're using tax credits, you have to go through DHCD. If you weren't using tax credits, you'd go through the Select Board with a capital F 40B. So that was just that. In terms of our community process, I think we try to make it clear that this is the next step. You know, once we're selected, we engage the community in what they want. We look at those plans, we figure out what people like, what they don't like. We engage the community to figure out what that is, and we work with that shared vision. We go through that with the 40B process, we go through that with the Select Board, we go through that with the Affordable Housing Trust. I think those are the main things I wanted to focus in on. You know, as a final point, I just wanted to say, you know, I can't disprove a negative. And I'm not, there's really not much I can say about it, other than there was no collusion of any kind on Orleans, and I'm disappointed that people feel that that is out there and that's being said. And my decision to remove ourselves from that process had nothing to do with any of that or any of those accusations. So I'm sorry that people feel that way, but that's not my opinion and the case in any way, shape, or form that, and I had a very good conversation with Kim Newman when we pulled out, and didn't get the sense that there was any feeling that I have any, done anything wrong. So I just want to say that at the end. I'm sorry that that came up and that that was issued, but we, you can't prove a negative, and I'm not sure what else to say about that. So we are very excited, would love to do this project. We think we've had a great job with the team that we have, with Union Studios. We think we've tried to be responsive to exactly what the town was looking for at this stage of the process, right? We have to remember it's this stage of the process, and we need to engage this community and take some of the feedback that folks here in this room gave, and that would be weaved into the overall process of meeting with different stakeholders and going through the zoning process. So thank you again for your time, appreciation, and consideration.
Just in deference to the gentleman here, could you address the height question?
Oh, sure. Do you want to talk about the height?
Hi, Paul, again. So just to be clear, these, the buildings, there's only one section of each building, the larger one, the sixth unit, that is occupied on three floors. It's designed to look like a two-and-a-half-story occupied attic. So in order to get that third floor occupiable, that area of the building is plus or minus 35 feet, which, measured by existing average grade, once we do the calculation, we haven't gotten into the engineering, that's why we say plus or minus. The rest of the building, the tail end, let's say, could be reduced. This is early concept architecture, and we'd be glad to work and hear concerns and work with the committee, if selected, to address those issues to everyone's satisfaction.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, three of the quick things, if I could. I know there was confusion. We are doing passive house, and passive house would require solar, so apologize for the confusion on that slide. I also wanted to make sure that people didn't leave this room thinking that there would be the number of people that could be living in this. So we actually, we got this question in advance. We actually reached out to Village Inn Austin Green, again, to see what the population was there. And there we have 65 units, 110 bedrooms, and 125 occupants. So it's basically a ratio of 1.3 occupants per bedroom, so it's not the large population that people might think could be there. And then on the, the last comment on the height of the buildings, one of the things that we've done in other, what's important for the height of the buildings that we found in other towns is where the base of the windows are for the fire department. So that's the key, that's one of the key things with the fire truck ladder. So in a lot of towns, if you keep the base of the window at 35 feet, it's safe for the fire department to be able to get folks. Just another detail about that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll take a motion.
What would the motion be, what you think?
To adjourn.
We don't make, so from here, what the process now is...
We're going to get back together again next week, and presumably, although she will take as much time as she needs, but we'll cancel the meeting if she's not ready.
I move the way to adjourn.
Now, this is the Affordable Housing Trust.
Affordable Housing, I've moved the Affordable Housing, adjourn its meeting.
Okay.
Second, Dave.
Mr. Avery.
Aye.
Mr. Bean.
Aye.
Ms. Schneber.
Aye.
Mr. Oppenheimer.
Aye.
Ms. McClellan.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye. That meeting is adjourned.
Motion to adjourn the Select Board.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye. We are adjourned at...
I had, no, this...
8:47.
Conservation.